Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Tiburon Town Council, February 27th. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Nick Far.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Here.
Mayor Fredericks.
Here. Now's the time for oral communications on any subject that is not on the agenda. You have three minutes, we cannot take action or discuss, but we're here to hear from you. Would anyone like to make a comment? Anyone from the public here in the room? Online?
If you don't mind, Madam Mayor, I'll just instruct the members of the public online.
Thank you.
Thanks. If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And with that, I see one member of the public.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. My name is Ria Augie, and I'm a senior, a high school senior, and I'm representing Raising the Bar. And I had a little thing I wanted to share about raising the bar. So I had a short thing. So I wrote, when we are kids, we're constantly absorbing information. We see what our parents do and try to be like them. As a kid, if you see parents and other adults around you constantly drinking, you normalize this behavior, observing your parents' substance use unfolded before your eyes and become a part of your environment, growing up can be intimidating experience for many young people. From a young age, I was aware of the substance use that was taking place in my community, from my swim team to local choir, to the soccer club I was a part of, and it began to feel like everyone was drinking and putting substances into their bodies around me. And that was a frightening feeling when I also noticed adults around me frequently drinking. An image that I often saw growing up was parents drinking at youth-centered events while the kids would play. I didn't understand how parents could care so much about their children's well-being, yet when it came to substance use, they were not setting a healthy example, or really being present during a game or event. I see a correlation also between mental health and substance abuse among many of my peers. Many parents think that it's just the media or friends that peer pressure teens into using substances. But that's definitely true in some cases. There's also a high number of people taking substances because they're suffering mentally. And I also believe it's essential to acknowledge the impact of parent behavior on children and teens' attitudes towards substance use. Parents serve as role models for their kids, and that's why I love raising the bar. Because when we witness parents using alcohol and drugs as coping mechanisms, we see that kids start to adopt that same behavior. Similarly, when they see parents or other adults drinking at events like youth sports and Halloween and birthday parties, they incorporate that into their own lives. And I think it's crucial to set a leading example and model healthy coping strategies such as exercise, mindfulness, and open communication, and demonstrate that people can have fun without alcohol and parents can set healthy habits for their children. And again, I'm speaking on behalf of Raising the Bar for the city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any sort of public comment online?
Seeing none.
In the future, can we up that volume a little?
Yes.
All right, we move now to the consent calendar. Would anyone in the public like to take the item off consent? I'm seeing none. Would the council like to do so? Then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
I'll second.
And the consent calendar is approved. We move now to a presentation.
Mayor, if I may, we need to take a vote. We have a first and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have, can we take a vote? Is to approve?
A motion to approve the consent calendar.
All in favor, say what?
Second.
Yes, they moved and seconded.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Now we move on to a presentation from the Tiburon appointee to the Marin Commission on Aging, Jane Gould. Thank you.
Look forward to being here.
Can you hear me well? Okay, good. So hello and good evening. I'm Jane Gould. I live in the Lyford Cove area, and I do appreciate this opportunity this evening to speak to the commission, to speak about the Commission on Aging. One in three residents in Tiburon is age sixty or older. I count myself amongst them. That's thirty-three percent. And the median age is fifty-one. That's not the mean age, that's the median age. So I'm really glad to be here to speak to the council again. And I say again, because you may recall at the January meeting, I briefly commented on the upcoming traffic study. It's actually traffic and transportation that led me in 2021, I believe it was 2021, to join the Commission on Aging. Before I moved to Tiburon twelve years ago, I worked as a transportation planner at UCLA. And daily, when I saw the car traffic and the congestion, I realized I knew Los Angeles was no place for old men or for old women. So I moved to Tiburon, but then I learned from my next-door neighbor in Lyford Cove that she was in her eighties at the time, that perhaps Tiburon was also not the place, an easy place to age in place when you could no longer drive. Our friendship together inspired me to write books on this topic, blogs, and continue as a transportation specialist. So the Commission on Aging, which I'm here to talk about, actually began, when I looked at the history, way back in 1977. And it was set up as a federal mandate because of the Older Americans Act, and it's sort of a checks and balances on how that funding is spent. There are twenty-three members. We are all volunteers, and we meet monthly. The twenty-three volunteers represent each of Marin's towns and cities, as well as the supervisory districts. So most commissioners, including myself, develop a specialty. And so the specialty area meets far more often and is much more involved on issues. So these include housing and transportation, senior nutrition, legislative advocacy, and a lot more. So during the next month or two, you're probably going to hear a lot more about the Commission on Aging because of two large studies. The first is a civil grand jury report that's wrapping up, and they've been looking at the organizational structure of the aging, of the aging and adult services here in Marin, and should it be its own department? The second study will be interesting to follow. It's called the Four-Year Plan, and it was last done in 2020. Aging and Adult Services is required to do a statistically valid survey of elders throughout Marin. So this year, they contacted by random sampling four hundred and twenty-seven people over age sixty. And the highlights from that study will be released and circulated soon. At the top of the list, I saw affordable housing, food insecurity, but there'll be a lot more press releases on that study. As your commissioner that represents Tiburon, and I know you want me to get to that important point, here's what I know. First of all, one size does not fit all. Second, many older people here are really active as volunteers. And three, many older people here, like myself, prefer events with multi-generational age groups. So I've been really fortunate as a commissioner. Many of you know Alan Bortel. He kind of succeeded me. And so he gives me a lot of tips. And I'm also very lucky to have a Belvedere counterpart from the Aging Commission, Larry Binkley. So Mr. Binkley and I have investigated some of the local programs and services for older people. We both believe that we have really excellent and safe and wonderful recreational and educational facilities here in town. But Mr. Binkley and I also met with the heads of the library and the heads of the ranch. And those two organizations, they had already been talking together on their own about reviving a senior fair, and Alan had told me that this town had that twenty years ago. So next month, Mr. Binkley and I plan to hold two drop-in sessions. I guess you could call them listening sessions at the library. So with boots on the ground, so to speak, Larry and I hope to hear from seniors about what's working for them here in town, what's not working, and how we could help to better meet their needs. So we're really looking forward to that, and it's the first time we've done that. So here is my personal take from serving a year and a half in this commission and serving the town of Tiburon, I hope, well. I have found, and this is the key point, that the resources here in Tiburon, also in Belvedere, are very expansive, but knowledge about them is not. So I'm going to give you some examples. Okay, first of all, there are weekly luncheons right down the street at the Hilorita for seniors aged sixty and over. And the food is really good. In fact, I think it would rival some of the local restaurants we go to here. But the problem is that it's really hard to sign up, and most people don't know about that senior meal at the Hilorita. The Hilorita also has a food bank, but very, very few people know about the food bank there. So here's another G. It's sort of hidden and out-of-sight thing I'll mention. And I'll, this is my last point, so I'll end on a transportation note. In Marin, believe it or not, ninety-three percent of older adults continue to drive. That's a big number. But they have an alternative. It's called Uber. Since July of this year, Marin Transit has offered all seniors, anyone who's sixty-five and over, a different transportation option. They get free trips or almost free trips on Uber. So here's the deal. Basically, Marin Transit will provide to users a voucher for up to twenty dollars. You pay five dollars of the fare. So as Alan Bortel pointed out, it's a six-hundred-dollar transportation value each quarter. You get thirty trips, fifteen round trips. The only qualification for this wonderful program that gives, means you don't have to drive, is your age. But again, people mostly don't know about this benefit. So I should add, as we talk about that, that those who live within three-quarters of a mile of the 219 bus stop, they also qualify for Marin paratransit service. So that means that the little buses can go somewhat up into the hills. In retrospect, and just to bring closure to what I want to speak or spoke about tonight, that might have helped my elderly neighbor, the one next door to me in Lyford Cove, who can no longer drive. So thank you very much for letting me speak this evening. I so appreciate, I know it's hard to be a board, and I appreciate all the hard work that this council does. And I will continue to provide updates to you in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any questions from the council?
Yeah.
Yes, Holly.
It's more of a comment. Is that okay? Is that in order?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I wanted to start by thanking you for that presentation. In Tiburon, I think what might be unique is that we have an aging population. And providing services to our seniors should always be at the forefront of all of our minds. I'm only twenty-nine, so it's going to be a long time before I get there, but I love all the free things that might be coming up. And I was going to ask, you know, it sounds like outreach and getting people to know these things is, has been a difficult task. I was actually going to ask our town clerk and our town manager if perhaps we could, on our website, create a senior section and work with Jane to get some of these items up. So create a senior section or add to a section we might already have. And then the other idea was perhaps we could do a TIB Talk where we feature seniors in a section. And for those of you who don't know, TIB Talk is a little bulletin that you can sign up by email. You know, I know that some of the, of our senior population might not be on email. If we did have the budget to do a mailing, or if we were mailing something else out anyway, I would love to see us include all of these items that our commissioner, Ms. Gould, has just reported on.
Yeah, I just briefly note, those are great ideas, and we'd be happy to work with Ms. Gould on getting the word out.
We'll definitely use the town mailing when we go to the library events. We'll definitely want to put that there.
Thank you, Holly. Those are great ideas. Do you want to talk?
Yeah. How long has this Uber, free Uber benefit been available to residents over the age of sixty? Because I've never heard of it before.
It's sixty-five, sorry.
Five.
Yeah. It started in July. Marin Transit, oh, I have a pen from them. They had a different program in which they were providing, they just tried different programs over time to, and this is one that they initiated in July.
And is it being used in other parts of Marin, or is it kind of an underutilized thing across the board?
It's underutilized across the board. And it's not clear over time that they'll continue it, but it is underutilized. And the thing about, well, I won't go into Uber and the peninsula here, sometimes takes longer to get a vehicle here.
Thank you. Any further comment from the council?
Just thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate it, and thank you for coming tonight. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Do we take public comment on the presentation?
Yes.
Is there any public comment or question? I am seeing none. Thank you. We move on now to action items. The first action item is to consider Main Street closures.
Thank you.
Staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, tonight council's considering the approval of the closure of Main Street for three separate events for calendar year 2024. The events are the Tiburon Peninsula Little League Opening Day Celebration, which would be scheduled for March fifteenth, 2024, the 2024 Juneteenth Celebration, scheduled for June fifteenth, 2024, and the 2024 Diwali Celebration, scheduled for November second, 2024. You'll see in the recommended actions, there's a separate motion for each event. And I would simply note that on May seventeenth, 2023, council voted unanimously to limit the number of lower Main Street closures to six events per calendar year and reserve three of those events for the Chamber of Commerce. So that leaves essentially three other events that council can approve per their policy. So the short version is, if you approve all three events tonight, that would round out the six events for calendar year 2024. I believe there are representatives in the audience who are prepared to give brief presentations for each event. Madam Mayor, and I'll turn it over back to the mayor.
Thank you. The council liked to ask the staff questions, or would you like to hold it until after the presentations?
I have one question.
Yes.
Is there anyone here who is seeking a Main Street road closure that is not one of the three groups that is presenting tonight, that is here tonight? I don't believe so. I wouldn't know. I don't know why everybody's here, but I don't believe there's anybody.
I think we'll find that out when we ask for public comment.
And I did have one question.
Yes, Holly.
To ask now. Thank you. So I know that we voted on this sixth Main Street closure, but we could also vote to add another one in if someone came to us later and we thought that Main Street should be closed for that purpose, correct?
I would double-check with the town attorney, but I believe it was a town, you know, policy. So yes, if there was another event application that came in, we would certainly bring it to council's attention.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think if you did, we ought to weigh in any decision to close Main Street again, the concerns of our downtown businesses. All right, any further comments from the council? Seeing none. Any public comment on this item? I, yes, please come.
Sorry.
Are these closures in addition to the Friday on Main?
Friday night on Main has not been held for a while.
Well, so just to remind, you know, council has approved up to six closures in a calendar year and has reserved three of those for Chamber of Commerce-sponsored events. I believe the chamber this past year held an event similar to Friday nights on Main, and I think that's their intent this year as well. I think they called it Summer on Main or something like that. I don't quite remember the name of it.
But the difference is that it isn't going to be a monthly Friday.
Correct. It was a one-time event, maybe on a Friday night. It may have been on a Sunday. I don't remember.
All right. Any further public comment or questions? I see none. Any online?
I do have members online. We'll start with Kelsey Fernandez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Okay. I'm commenting on the Tiburon Peninsula Little League Opening Day Celebration. My name is Kelsey Fernandez, and I'm the executive director at Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships. The goal of our organization is to prevent and delay underage substance use in Marin so we can reduce the negative short and long-term harms associated with early use. Marin lies outside the norm of what can be considered an acceptable amount of youth experimentation. Based on the most recent California Healthy Kids Survey, twice as many eleventh graders in Tam Union High School District reported using drugs and alcohol when compared to their peers across the state. That's two times higher than the state average. MHIP has activated a number of evidence-based prevention strategies to address the concerning rates and the social, emotional, and financial impact it has on our families and communities. I know you all received an email today about the Raising the Bar campaign, which is just one of our initiatives. What we know is that prevention can't start in high school or even middle school. Community prevention starts with parent modeling and community norms from a very young age. Ninety-five percent of Marin schools and over twenty youth organizations have agreed to do their part to support healthy youth spaces by discouraging the use of alcohol or other drugs at events that are specifically youth-focused, such as Little League games and team parties. I can tell you from working with parents that the vast majority don't mind skipping the alcohol for a few hours during youth events, especially if there is a chance that it creates a healthier environment for all youth, as well as safer driving. Organizations have found other ways to raise funds that don't involve parents buying and consuming alcohol during these youth-focused events. We are asking you to please keep this in mind as you consider the permit application before you. It's a minor change, but when done collectively, it can make a big difference. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any further online comments?
Yes, next speaker, please.
Just a question. We're going to approve the items one by one instead of as a package. Should we just take comments as we go down the line, or is the online comment open to all three?
Hello?
We have him. We have a speaker ready.
I'm sorry, what?
Let me know when you're ready.
Shall I let the speaker go ahead under general comment?
I'm sorry, what?
Shall I let this current speaker go ahead?
Yes, go ahead. I have the question, but let it fall as it falls.
Wait, but I have a question before we start the timer. Is this regarding the three events? This is what I'm speaking on in town, three events?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Damian Morgan. I'm born and raised in Marin City, California. Just caught the water from you. And I, you know, being born and raised in Marin City, we were born to love all, you know, love thyself, love all people. You know, we are, we've done it. Don't talk, we've done it. And, you know, many people in this nation and groups have benefited off the backs of black folk, including, you know, having events and coming together when we have events, celebrate black folk at an event for three or four hours. And again, many groups of people in Tiburon, all across Marin, have benefited off the backs of black people. My point is, I want to tell you all that at your real estate firms and your tech firms and the big banking and all those things, make sure you, make sure you don't exclude people in those arenas. You know, the parties and coming together and benefiting off the backs of, you know, Black Lives Matter and benefiting off the backs of YAMA, YAMA's event, unfortunate event. We want all to be there in all arenas, in all spaces, in all businesses, in the big banking world. So all of you that work in Wells Fargo, you know, your executives, you have your law firms, you work in big tech, all those things. Remember inclusion in those arenas too, not just for a downtown event for three hours. It's important. I wanted to be there tonight, look you in your eyes and tell you that, how important it is. You know that. I think my message is, you know this message. This message is not new to you. It makes sense to you. But how important is it to include others in the arenas of big banking, tech, healthcare, real estate firms, anti-redlining, and all those things? Again, Damian Morgan here, born and raised in Marin City. I'm a Tam High graduate. We were born and we lived with love. We showed all folks love. We don't get it back, but we're still here. We're still walking. We're still striving with open arms. So in your event, your event, and I'll be probably at all three of them, I'll remind you then, I'll remind you in your next council meeting, open your arms in the other arenas besides events, corporate world, and more, and the world of justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any further comments?
Seeing none.
Then I will bring it back to council, and as advised, we will take these approvals one by one.
Madam Mayor, the items, the representatives do have presentations.
They do have presentations. So the first item is the Tiburon Peninsula Little League Opening Day Celebration. Is there a presentation?
Yes, thank you. Hello, good evening. My name is Dana Chivers. I am the president of the Tiburon Peninsula Little League, and I wanted to thank you all for taking the time to consider our application for both an opening day parade and a celebration on Main Street. Oh, thank you.
It's counterintuitive. That's forward.
Okay. I'll try to mess that up no more than three times. Yeah, so thank you for considering the opening day parade, as well as a Friday night on Main celebration for the Tiburon Little League community. So for those that don't know, the Tiburon Peninsula Little League serves the Belvedere, Tiburon, and Strawberry communities. We are, this year, going to have a little over three hundred and twenty-five kids participating across eight leagues and over thirty teams for the Little League, age range from five, or really four until fourteen years old. So it really provides an opportunity for the youth of this area to participate in youth sports and to gain all the benefits that come along with youth sports. Just. This has kind of got nothing to do with the opening day parade, but we are very proud of the fact that Tiburon Little League is the smallest district within our area, but has been back-to-back-to-back champions. It's really been a source of pride for our community. It's brought the community together. We've really enjoyed the growing and continued in growing support of the community. This last year, the Tiburon Arc did a fantastic job of providing some real estate on their weekly paper, providing recaps of our games, and really celebrating the league, which we tremendously enjoyed, and our kids got a tremendous kick out of seeing their name in the paper. You know, the Tiburon Little League is a hundred percent volunteer-led organization. Um, you know, the Tiburon Little League is a hundred percent volunteer-led organization. You know, we are all doing this, moms and dads and other members of the community are all doing this because we want to provide the kids the memories of youth sports that we all had when we were growing up. I remember, uh, being part of the Nevada Little League and having opening day parade and driving in the bed, in the bed of a truck down Grant Street. And it's just, it's, it's, we want to have our kids have those memories. And, you know, as I've gotten into this more, just remember that this brings the community together from parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents, kids. It's, it's just really tremendous to see everybody at games and at things like our opening day parade and Friday nights on Main. Um, you know, this really, the, the Friday nights on Main and opening day parade is just an opportunity for us to really feature that nostalgia tradition and fanfare of small-town baseball. Um, it's, it's really, to me, it really adds to the social fabric of the community. Um, and it just continues to drive excitement and interest in baseball for the kids as they go from age four up through fourteen. Uh, the opening day parade and the Friday nights on Main is also a fantastic event for us to raise money for the league. This helps us maintain our fields, buy uniforms, um, provide scholarships for those that need them. And, you know, what we're also going to be starting to do now is we're, we're paying for more coaching clinics and we're hoping that the proceeds from this Friday nights on Main will help pay for those coaching clinics to provide better coaching for our kids. Um, and, and that so that it will continue to then evolve and improve their skills and love for youth sports. Um, and, and you know, if you have not been to the parade and the Friday nights on Main, it's truly a fantastic thing to see all these little kids running around in their uniforms, trying their best to clear out the inventory at the candy shop, trying their best to eat every pizza at Wayfair and having everybody go to dinner at Sam's and all the other restaurants up and down Main Street throughout the night. Uh, so our plan is very, very similar to what we've done in past years. I don't know if I'm on the clock or. Um, our plan is to do the same thing that we did in past years. We would start on Old Rail Trail and head down to Main Street on a Friday afternoon, Friday the fifteenth. Uh, we would line up at four, parade starts at four-thirty, and we have the downtown celebration from five to eight. Uh, and have Main Street cleaned up by eight o'clock with the road back and open. Um, I think, kind of hit on, on, hit on this, I think the main point I want to hit here is we do have lots of parent volunteers who are very, very vigilant, keeping the kids safe and organized as we get together, making sure that everyone stays off of Tiburon Boulevard and making sure that everybody proceeds down Old Rail, Old Rail Trail in a nice orderly fashion. Um, again, the layout is going to be the exact same that it was last year. We will have, um, games and, um, uh, a lot of different activities for the kids in front of Sam's and further to the, uh, west on Main Street. And then we would plan on having, um, you know, food from Waypoint that we, we bring out for all the kids. And then we would have a, a bar on the east side of, uh, Main Street there and selling spirit ware in front of Fountain Plaza. I think I've covered all this, you know, I, I guess last year we did not have a band. I know that was a concern from two years ago. This year, we are still, we, we are not planning on having a band. Um, we understand that was a concern from some of the merchants there and it's just, it's not necessary for us to provide this event. Um, and, and lastly, I just want to say thank you very much to everybody who was very, very helpful for us uh, and, and speaking with the town council, speaking with the Chamber of Commerce and putting on this event last year.
Thank you for the presentation. Does anyone on the council have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, have you, have you had any famous Tiburon residents, uh, be marshal for this parade in the past?
Uh, we have. Most, most importantly, we had, um, our, uh, crossing guard Tom at, in front at Reed last year, and then two years before that, we had Barry Bonds as our fire marshal, uh, this year. I'm not sure how we're going to top those two quite yet. Um, I'm hoping that maybe so we can get some of our, uh, back-to-back-to-back All-Star champions to come out and participate as maybe fire marshals, one big group so that our, you know, they, they, uh, they would be right next to our four-year-olds. So I'm sure our four-year-olds would love to look up at your son and, and think, you know, I can, I can do that one day too.
Any further questions, comments? I have a question, sir. You know, as you, you have probably seen, we've gotten a lot of community feedback about the concern of linking an alcohol event with a children's event. Would you please address that and sort of?
Sure.
Yeah.
Happy to. So I, I fully appreciate the concerns. Um, I, I understand the concerns. I, I think I disagree with, um, as a society, what are we, what are we supposed to do about those concerns? I think there's, they're legitimate concerns. I understand them. Um, but where, 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 where should those concerns begin and where should they stop? Should we have, um, you know, are we going to stop, stop having alcohol served at pizza parlors? We're going to stop having alcohol served at, um, burger joints? I, I, I just don't understand why, uh, where, where does it begin? Where does this, where does it stop? Um, but I do appreciate the concerns. I do understand them. I think that we take our, we take, we, we, we work with the town council, we work with the ABC to provide a safe environment for it. We, um, as I mentioned, we have the, the games on one side of Main Street and we have the bar set up on the other side of Main Street, um, to provide some distance there. Um, so we take every precaution that we can to ensure a very safe event.
So, so this is actually a children's event, not a general restaurant. Um, and I, I also, um, had a question about whether the parents just intermingle with the children in the other children's spaces with their drinks.
Um, yeah, I would say that, that we have kids of all ages. So when you have, when there's the four and the five-year-olds running around down around the games, there are certainly parents watching those kids. There are not, you know, we don't, we, we have volunteers who are, uh, conducting those games. Those volunteers are not drinking while they're, you know, handing a baseball to a, to a young child to try to throw it into a, a, a net. Um, so we do try to, we, we do try to separate them, but yes, you know, I'm, I'm, the adults do intermingle with the children during the event.
And, and the, the sale of alcohol benefits, um, the soccer league does it, or is it?
The baseball league, yes.
Baseball.
Yes, all, all the proceeds go back into.
So this is your fundraiser.
This is a fundraiser.
And, and the adults with alcohol do mingle with the children. I think there's concern about that. It would really be wonderful in the future if this could be addressed a little more aggressively.
Well, we will have our volunteers who are running the games that the children are participating in or will not be drinking while they are volunteering during the, uh, during conducting those games.
I, I understand that, and then that is a safety concern. I think what the public was concerned about was the modeling that the parents are providing in a children's event. I know you're doing the best you can, but I think we should discuss it as we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you very much for the presentation and Little League is wonderful. My son, who is forty, was a member.
Thank you.
Uh, when he was a child. Is there any public comment on this, uh, particular item from people in the room? I'm seeing none. Is there any further online comment?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Any discussion?
I would just like to make a motion to approve, uh, the three events.
Hold on. I think we have two other presentations. So we're just talking about.
I think we were told.
I know, we're just talking about the.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm just correcting.
Yes, I am so sorry.
I think it's up, it's, it's honestly up to the, you know, the council, whether they want to hear each individual presentation and vote or hear all three and then, you know, vote. I think it could go either way. It's up to you.
Um, as, as someone who has to manage the meeting, I think we should just go forward one by one. So you, did you just make a motion?
Whatever you want to do. I'll do. Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve Little League.
Okay, I'd.
Yes.
I'd like to move to amend the motion that we approved Little League, but we don't authorize the sale of alcohol. Uh, I think that the comments that we've received have been very well taken and there's a difference between having the restaurants that we know and love on Main Street serve alcohol when people go inside to eat. But it's, that's a wholly different, um, uh, environment than having folks buying alcohol and drinking at a kid's event, uh, in our downtown.
So you, that was a substitute.
It's a motion to amend, and I need a second if we're going to pursue it.
Well, first we need a second on the original motion before you bring your motion to amend. So let's first see if there's a second to.
I would second the original motion.
Okay. And now there's a motion to amend on the table from.
And I'll second that.
So therefore we will vote on the amendment one first.
Okay, but we can have discussion on it first if people want to.
Uh, so are we through with discussion or should we move to voting on the amended motion?
That's up to the council whether you want to discuss the two motions on the floor.
All right. Would anyone like to discuss this further?
Sure. So just my inclination, um, is to move forward with the, uh, event that includes alcohol sales. Not the public comment notwithstanding, I really appreciate where they're coming from. I especially like your comment where it would be nice to segregate the alcohol and say, hey, no alcohol more than thirty feet from the bar area. So if parents do want to go down and chaperone their kids at the games, they just have to leave their drink near the bar. I think that would be very sensible. Um, the reason I'm more comfortable in having the alcohol in general is because in the past, the, the event has sort of morphed from a kid-centric parade to a community-wide Friday nights on Main proxy. And so it, the, the event by the end of the evening has a lot more, in my experience, than just Little League parents and families. And so because it is a community event, I feel like it sort of disentangles the link between kid and alcohol enough. We, we haven't had anything go wrong in the past. We haven't really had complaints. I think the event has been very well received. So that, again, I do appreciate the criticism from the Raise the Bar angle. Um, that's, that's where, that's where I see it.
So is that a substit-, is that a substitute motion or would you accept?
I'm just discussing, um, but.
Would you accept his suggestion as an amendment to your amended motion?
It's not a suggestion for amendment, it was just discussion.
Yes, but I was asking if it could be accepted as an amendment. Anyway, do you have some more questions, comments?
Uh, yeah, I would, I would, uh, echo, uh, council member Ryan's, uh, comments. I've been to this event before. It really does turn into a Friday nights on Main, uh, style event following the parade. Um, some of the kids clear out and go home. Some of them stick around. Um, I think more people that don't even have children end up showing up and it turns into a mu- much more of a, of a, uh, again, a Friday nights on Main event. So I think, um, alcohol isn't sold prior to the parade or during the parade. Um, and it's not anywhere near where the parade starts. It happens to be sold at some point after the parade where the parade ends. Um, so my comfort level is, is, is also, uh, much higher for this event.
As, as it is proposed by the presenter?
Yes.
I, I actually had a, had a question for staff. Um, is, is there a possibility that, uh, someone, you know, at this event, if there was no alcohol served, could they just go to Waypoint, get a glass of wine and take it outside?
I believe the answer is yes. Uh, um, uh, my understanding has always been in Tiburon, you can actually have an open container. Um, I don't know if you could purchase it at a store and then carry it out. I think that, that I don't have the exact answer for that, and I don't believe we have, uh, the police chief here to, to help us out, so.
Okay, so I want to start by saying that I, I'm very, very torn, uh, with which motion to go with. I want to thank the individuals from Raise the Bar for speaking tonight. I, uh, haven't been able to come recently to this event, so I don't know what it looks like, but it does sound, for my colleagues who have gone, that it has, it's basically a Friday nights on Main. I think were this an event where there's only Little League children that are very, very young and it was just at the parade and people were parading with their drinks, um, I would feel probably, uh, uh, like we should not be, obviously I wouldn't want to have that happen. But I also think that we do not have an alcohol policy for any events, uh, in Tiburon. And I think singling out Little League, uh, as one event and not having this apply to all the events, somehow in my mind, it doesn't work because there's children at all of our events. So I know that, um, you know, uh, that I, I, so I'm, I'm very torn on honestly which way to vote. I've never find myself in this position. Uh, I think what I would like to see is, you know, in, uh, a policy in Tiburon around, uh, you know, alcohol at events. And I, I do think that it should be relatively across the board. Um, I think most of the people that will be drinking the alcohol are the children, are the parents, sorry. No, I think it's, it's the parents of the children and they are going to make sure that their children are not drinking the alcohol. So I have a lot of, um, you know, respect for Little League. Uh, I also heard that some of the funding is coming from the alcohol sale. Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, you know, we don't have the leisure of not approving this and bringing it back. And, um, so I, I think I want to hear more from my colleagues. But, uh, I think that, um, I'd also like to see if, you know, a policy across the board that applies to when we allow alcohol at events in Tiburon and when we don't.
Um, so with respect to across-the-board policy, I think the specific concern here is that it is a children's event, um, and it's conflated with a fundraiser. And the fundraiser depends on alcohol consumption. Um, that is a very particular event. And, and the issue is how to address the concerns that this provides a particularly spectacular modeling opportunity because it is the children's event with, with parents raising money with alcohol. The motion that is on the table, I would love to have it restated. I am inclined to simply, uh, contain where the alcohol is actually carried in the event. The effect that people can go into a bar, order a drink and walk anywhere is irrelevant to, uh, approving a permit for a particularly described children's event.
The, the only thing I would add to this conversation, well, I guess there are two things. One is that, um, I, I really was moved by the letters and the comments that we received. Um, and I'm always a little, uh, I always feel bad when I hear people say, we, we hear what you're saying and we care about the issue and we care about what you're saying, but we're going to ignore you. So it's just kind of, um, uh, I just think we should take their comments seriously and think about them, uh, more deeply. Uh, the other thing I would say is, uh, for those of you who were on the council, uh, when Noah Griffin served, um, I also just want to remind you about how he was very passionate about this issue and spoke about it very eloquently. Um, and, uh, he's of course no longer on the council, but, um, I think he made a very compelling case for having, uh, this children's event in particular be alcohol-free.
All right. Is there further discussion by the council?
Can I ask one quick question, actually?
I'm sorry.
Would the Little League even want the event if you couldn't sell alcohol or would you want to modify the format? Or, I mean, would you still hold it with everything else on the application as is? Or would it be, would you have to revisit that?
We would, we would still, we would still hold the event.
Okay.
Uh, I think it would, um, to what you, Councilman Ryan or Councilman Nick, our council member said, it, it would lose, um, the commu-, I would think. it, it would lose um, the commu- I would think you would lose the community um, impact that it has because it now no longer would become a Friday nights on main. I think a lot of people would disperse much more quickly than they otherwise would.
I had some more comments. So I just wanted to respond to a few things. So the importance of whether or not someone could uh, you know, purchase alcohol and walk into the street is that we wouldn't be able to prevent alcohol at any event, right? So that was my reason for asking that. We would not be able to prevent, you know, um, you know, I, I understand that this is a children's event and I want to make it clear that I'm not ignoring any of the public uh, comments that we got or the letters and certainly not uh, Noah's statements, which I remember very clearly. I do however, think that we have to have a policy that applies across the board. There's a lot of other children's events that I know of in Tiburon where al- where there's alcohol. And I don't know why, how we could say to Little League, you can't have alcohol. That, well, not the parents cannot have alcohol in, in a certain area. However, for these other children's events, they can have alcohol. And um, that, that's the, that's the issue that I'm having. You know, I don't, I don't believe there should be alcohol, you know, prominent at the event. But I don't know how we, we say only Little League has to follow this and other children's organizations that might have events in Tiburon don't. And um, that's what I wanted to say.
So I don't think a vote on this particular item um, will prevent us from developing a broader policy if it is needed. All right, where are we? Any further discussion? Would someone like to restate the motion that's on the table, please?
Councilmember, Councilmember Wellner's motion is the first one we'll vote, vote upon, and it's to allow the event without alcohol.
So we're voting first on your motion to have the event without alcohol?
To approve the event without alcohol.
And if that fails, what is the next step?
Then the next motion, which was Councilmember Thier's motion, was to approve the event without, as submitted, with alcohol.
So the alternative of, of constraining where people actually, adults actually carry the alcohol is not part of any of the motions?
Correct.
But it could be entered as a motion after we vote on this one, right?
Okay, um, so we vote first on uh, Councilmember Wellner's motion.
Let me, let me interrupt real quick. If Councilmember Ryan wants to make a third motion, now's the time, not after one fails.
Okay, thank you. Then I, I would make a double secret substitute motion to allow the, to allow the, the event um, with the exception that um, with the requirement that, that alcohol has to be carried and consumed, alcohol that is purchased at the Little League sponsored bar has to be um, carried and consumed within forty feet of the bar.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
So now we start with Councilmember Ryan's motion.
Can, can we comment on that?
Yes.
Sure.
So, uh, do we have someone that can enforce that, that forty-foot rule? Or do we also know whether or not restaurants that are, that are potentially serving alcohol? I mean, it's, it seems like a pretty loose.
I, I agree, but I'm going to go just to know who the really bad parents are in this town.
And, and let me say that the idea that, that parents of children would not honor the limits of the permit is appalling to me.
I, I do have a question. Which is directed to town council or to uh, yeah, our, our town council with an S E. Or our, our legal division, as we like to refer to. So we've been, we've been operating with kind of this hazy notion of what happens at, when restaurants sell alcohol. My understanding is that what the town, town manager said is there's no uh, provision on open carry and that restaurants can sell alcohol to their customers, but that there was uncertainty about whether you can buy alcohol at a restaurant and then take it outside.
There is, and I, you know, I'm remembering now and I, I wish I knew uh, uh, in advance this question. Um, I believe during COVID, you know, the ABC had a uh, particular exemption for the period of the emergency where customers were allowed to leave establishments that sold alcohol with alcohol. I, I don't believe customers can leave establishments with open alcohol from a restaurant, uh, you know, or a bar selling alcohol. But I'm not sure about if they could purchase closed containers and then walk out and then, you know, I, it would, we're not going to get that answer tonight, I don't think, um, unfortunately. There may be a distinction in terms of walking out of a restaurant with a, a beer in your hand and a cup as opposed to being able to purchase a bottle of beer that's unopened and walk out.
And I think post-COVID, it's also a distinction of whether you can do it just for drinks or you have to also order food. That's my understanding, but I'm not entirely clear about what the post-COVID legislation was.
So does that information change the motion you have on the table?
No, I think the, the, the motion and the two amendments are ready to be voted on probably, right?
All right, are we ready to vote then on uh, Councilmember Wellner's motion, which you'll restate? You, you're first.
I think it's actually Councilmember Ryan's.
Unless maybe I'll make a fourth amendment and then mine will go first.
This should be fun.
It, it already is.
Okay, we're getting serious now, because it is a serious matter. It's an important fundraiser to the soccer league. We'd like to find a way to make it work uh, and still be respectful of all the information about what modeling alcohol at festive events might mean for children. With that, would you like to restate your motion?
It's to um, approve the event as proposed with the exception that we restrict alcohol um, carrying and consumption that is purchased at the Little League sponsored bar to an area within forty feet of that bar.
All right, uh, I guess this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nick Far.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
Now we're on to the next application.
Thank you. Uh, do you want to badge issue patrol the event? We move now uh, to the next uh, Main Street Closure Action Item. And this is for twenty twenty-four Juneteenth. Would someone like to make a presentation?
Welcome. Uh, my name is Ruben, dude from Valdedear. I also know many of you very well. Uh, I've been on the task force, uh, Diversity Inclusion Task Force for two plus years. And uh, for Juneteenth, I think we're excited. I mean, Juneteenth, uh, I think it sort of put us on the mark as Tiburon, sort of be, being a beacon of hope for cultural awareness. Uh, we did this coming out of the pandemic with the first Juneteenth. Uh, we did two more and coming on our fourth one, and it's been terrific to have the help of, you know, Noah Griffin and that. Uh, we always get a terrific band, Joyce Grant Band, uh, the Black Cowboys, Buffalo Soldiers. And word is spread, you know, I remember even this past year, there was uh, some parents from my parents, uh, from my, one of my kids' schools who came by African-American. And I said, you have to come to the Tiburon Juneteenth event. They're like, really? You guys have a Juneteenth event? And they came and they said it was just the most amazing event. And we're bringing more people from all walks of life. And I think it's sort of setting the cultural awareness lead that Tiburon does care. And so I just want to support the event, similar budget, similar uh, presentation. Always welcome to any input from anyone in our community. I'm, you know, looking for other co-chairs who want to lead the way. Happy to uh, go through logistics and make this even more beautiful than it has been for the past four years. So ask for your support.
Thank you, Ruben. Are there any comments or questions from the council?
I, I, I just wanted to say that it's a fantastic event. I really think it did put Tiburon on the map in terms of diversity, inclusion and this town's commitment uh, to uh, see that through. So I wanted to thank the committee. I see everybody. Actually, I see many people here. I see Annette and Ruben and Karen and Tina and I'm leaving someone out. I'm sorry if I did. But um, thank you for all your work and putting it on and I'm excited uh, to attend.
Is there any further public comment? I forgot to ask. Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, hi, I just wanted to make one further comment addressing the gentleman from Marin City. Part of what we'd like to do as a part of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force is to ensure that we provide information on the town committees during those events that we are recommending so that we can get increased representation of diversity on those committees. And I think that's an important part of our recommendation.
Uh, thank you. And uh, Tina Pica Day made those comments. Thank you, Tina. Um, I would just like to make a short comment that, that not only for those that care about putting Tiburon on the map, this successfully does that. It also does something for the community as a whole. Um, it reminds us that we all live here, we can all celebrate together. And there are wonderful things to know about each other and our families and our culture and the communities we identify with. I want to thank everyone who's involved in these events. Is there any further comment, questions?
I was just going to say how enthusiastic I am about it and very pleased that it's uh, not only continuing, but uh, each time there seems to be a more thoughtful presentation about what's going to happen, including this uh, uh, publicity around uh, town committees. Um, and I'm just excited to see it unfold this year.
All right, um, bring it back to count, yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, so I was also going to just echo, I think, what a lot of other folks on town council have said. And thank you, Ruben, and other folks for organizing this great event. Um, can I make a motion that we approve uh, the Juneteenth Celebration um, application as, as it is?
Second.
And there's a second from uh, Vice Mayor Thier. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We move on now to Diwali celebration. Uh, are there any comments from the public or presentations on that? Oh, sure, come on.
Back again. Yes, man, I remember back in two thousand twenty-two, we did a terrific Diwali uh, celebration. With the help of Tina over here. And uh, you know, it's been asked by a lot of the community to bring this back. And if you want some amazing dancing for, you know, our growing Indian American community, teaching them how to do some bunga dancing, getting the kids involved with, you know, all kinds of drawing. It is a festival of lights, a very positive celebration. It's in November. And so just looking to bring it back. Um, we had great attendance and the word's already spreading now that if we throw this again, more and more folks want to, you know, come on out and partake and uh, make this even bigger and cooler than we did it last time. So appreciate the support.
Thank you, Ruben. Thank you, Tina. Um, bring it back to us now. I'm sure there's no further discussion. And um, someone would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion again. It's an amazing event and I can't wait for this year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Isaac seconds. Um, all in favor? Aye. Any uh, no's? I'm seeing none. Ah, let's move now to action item two, which is event funding requests. Is this um, approval something we can do, um, at least for the ones that are for this year's operating budget in a package?
I, I believe so. I'll give you a brief staff report if you'd like. Uh, for this item, council is considering three requests related to funding um, that are coming from the Diversity Inclusion Task Force recommendations. The first would be to approve eight thousand, an eight thousand dollar expenditure for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-four, to cover costs for the twenty twenty-four Juneteenth Celebration. The second would be approving expenditure of eight thousand dollars in the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-four uh, to cover costs related to the twenty twenty-four Nauru's celebration. And the third item, which is a little bit different, is to direct staff to include eight thousand dollars in funding in the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Um, that this, the motion as it's printed here is actually wrong. It shouldn't say from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget. You should just ignore that. It should be direct staff to include eight thousand dollars in funding for the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget to cover costs for the Diwali Celebration. The reason it was structured this way is that Diwali Celebration is occurring in the next fiscal year, not the current fiscal year, and council hasn't adopted a budget for the next fiscal year.
Thank you, town manager. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I am seeing none. Uh, is there anything uh, from the public on this budget item? I'm seeing none. Move to approve. I'm sorry?
That was a motion to approve.
Uh, so we are voting on items A and B first, uh, which are uh, allocations from the twenty twenty-four operating budget.
I think uh, procedurally, we have to uh, have a motion that's, that's which ones we're mo- we're voting on, right?
Um, what I, what I was trying to do and obviously unsuccessfully is to roll this forward by voting first on the two items that come from the twenty twenty-four budget.
Okay, so motion to approve uh, the Juneteenth Celebration and, and the Nauru's Celebration.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, now we move to the proposed twenty twenty-five uh, budget. Um, and I ask you to include eight thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-four Diwali Celebration. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? There we go. All right, we move now, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was a hand. We move now to action item three, Diversity Inclusion Task Force Strategic Plan. Review and consider adoption of the plan.
Uh, just a very brief staff report. Madam Mayor, um, on October seventh, twenty twenty, uh, the council formed a Diversity Inclusion Task Force as a standing committee of the town council. At their January tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the DITF uh, approved a diversity, excuse me, a Tiburon Diversity and Inclusion Task Force twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five strategic plan and recommended that the plan be placed on a future town council agenda item for review and adoption. A copy of the approved plan was attached to the staff report as exhibit one.
Are there any questions from the council? I'm seeing none. I'll open it now for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the council. Is there any discussion?
Could we leave public comment open just for a minute longer? Because if, if members of the DITF wanted to speak on, on behalf or anything like that, or if members of the public wanted to speak up, that, that's the time, right? During the public comment area?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone from the DITF or from the public knew that that is your time to speak on this topic if you would like to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Isaac. I, yeah.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so Tina Pica Day from the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. I've been working with a number of uh, DITF representatives on an ad hoc committee for almost the past year on the Diversity Inclusion Strategic uh, Plan. And we've been meeting with uh, the Diversity Inclusion Task Force, including members of the council for the last three months to review three components to this plan. Um, the three main priorities that were set forth for the formulation of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force um, are one, creating a DEI-centered community engagement and education plan. Two, creating bias-free policing. And three, developing diverse and inclusive staffing policies and practices. Um, this ad hoc committee met to formulate success metrics, initiatives and an annual recommended budget um, in order to achieve those objectives that were set forth in the initial formulation of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. And we are making recommendations based on the data collected to inform the current representation of diversity on the diversity, forgive me, the town of Tiburon elected and appointed officials. The current staff representation of diversity and in addition to that, the diversity of the RIPA stops made in Tiburon, um, in the town of Tiburon. Those statistics are provided in a copy of the strategic plan. And this particular strategic plan has received numerous um, correspondences that were included in the attachments for this particular agenda item. And we as a Tiburon uh, Inclusion Task Force Subcommittee would appreciate the town council supporting diversity, equity, inclusion as a top priority of a town that's celebrating diversity, as we've discussed in these um, particular events as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Any questions, comments?
Um, I'm just wondering if there's other members of the public that might want to speak.
Um, I will handle that. I understood. Um, and we'll handle that. I understood you wanted to speak.
Oh, oh, no. I, I'm sorry if I, if I.
Uh, we'll move on now. Are the other members of the public who would like to speak?
Sure, back again. Ruben Colra, uh, Tiburon Diversity Inclusion Task Force. We've made, I think, tremendous progress over the past couple of years and might have mentioned our earlier task force meeting where I feel like we're getting to the crux of the meat of what we're doing that I think signals to not only our community, but the greater Marin as a whole, that we are committed to building a more beautiful Tiburon. Tiburon is like one of the most beautiful places in the world. And I think by having these events and supporting a warm, welcoming community, it's, you know, can only get better for not only ourselves, but even future generations. Uh, I think the plan that the subcommittee worked on is terrific. It's uh, really put some teeth into accountability, uh, policing and, you know, continuing this cultural awareness of when, and events. And, you know, I know we'll probably get to it shortly, but uh, in the interest of me having to catch a flight, I'm gonna briefly talk about uh, the structure. I think the structure has been working. I, I said earlier at the task force meeting, if it's not broken, why fix it? Uh, I appreciate all of your commitment. I have to, I know you guys have to come to like an extra meeting, you know, each month or every other month, but I think until we get some meaningful change, which we're at the cusp of with after we've established the uh, the cap, the citizens advisory panel and getting this strategic plan in place, you know, in due time, I think we might be able to, you know, change that structure. But for right now, it's been working.
All right, but we are now only on the item of the strategic plan.
Excellent, but I'm just making my.
So, so you get to come up again at the next item, if you will. Are there any further? Yes, Karen, please.
I just knocked over my water glass. What an entrance. Um, I, I just wanna remind everybody um, that um, well, I, I'm Karen Carrera. I'm on the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. And um, this uh, strategic plan has been, you know, uh, an effort, quite an effort, right? We've worked so hard for it. Uh, we met, we started meeting almost a year ago. Um, and um, in addition to Tina and I, um, Nushin um, was, I think she may have left, is also um, on, was also on the, on, on the Strategic Planning Committee. And Annette came to a few meetings when we were finally putting it, the, the last few months. And then Alice was on the, the, the ad hoc committee as well. And uh, she was really helpful in bringing the town councils. Uh, how, what things could uh, pass? What, what shouldn't be in there? How do we get it approved? What, you know, what language should we put in? Uh, because we started with five strategic plans. One's from the library, one from Measure A. Remember, uh, one from the San Francisco Police Department? Be, um, because we did wanna focus on um, on, you know, addressing the issues in the Yema settlement, right? Like bias-free policing, uh, uh, you know, hiring and talent uh, acquisition that would be, you know, diverse and also make people feel included in the town of Tiburon. So we worked really hard um, to address the, the issues raised by the, the Yema settlement. And I think, and it was actually Alice who told us during one of our DITF meetings, um, you need to do a strategic plan. And that, and we, that's what we did. So we formed this committee. And um, and we worked so hard bringing all these different plans together and creating our own that I think meets, um, we all agreed, you know, together on the language we met weekly, I mean, um,
Yeah.
weekly, um, for months and months and months until we boiled it down to these, um, I guess it's five pages, four pages. Um, uh, but I, so I really hope that um, that all the town council members support this. There was a lot of blood, sweat and tears that went into this and, and we really believe in it. And we really think it will, it's also, you know, something that the Tiburon General Plan um, also uh, envisioned. Um, the general plan says continue to have a diversity, equity, inclusion task force to make recommendations to educate the community at large. And so that's what we're doing with this strategic plan. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions or comments? Colleen?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you, Karen, uh, Ruben, and uh, obviously, uh, Tina, Annette and Alice for your work uh, on the strategic plan.
And, and Annette, she, Annette was our, our lodestone. She kept saying metrics, people.
Oh, I said Annette. I said Annette.
But you didn't say, you didn't say metrics.
I, I should have said Annette metrics.
All right, um, is there any more public uh, presentation on this? Okay, um, yeah.
Is there any public comment on Zoom?
Seeing none.
And there's no comment online. So we bring it back now to the council for discussion and um, I, I would like to lead this off just to clarify what happened um, in the earlier January meeting, uh, which apparently members of the public took as a threat to not approve the strategic plan, which so many of us, and especially uh, Karen and Tina, have vested so much intellectual property in. But I was mostly concerned about process. So from the beginning of the DITF discussion in twenty twenty-three, and then again, March eighth, twenty twenty-three, when the subcommittee was formed, the strategic plan was framed as the strategic plan of the DITF. All right, when it came to the last meeting of the DITF, the motion was framed as a strategic plan of the town. The strategic plan of the DITF was to be recommended to the town council to be approved as that, the work plan for the DITF. To be internally consistent with the mission statement, the DITF's strategic plan should reflect the vision of the group and its implementation, which would be shown in a work plan. It is, as stated, the roadmap for the DITF to make substantiated recommendations. Those are the actual words of this strategic plan. Some of the proposed metrics um, cha- challenged, they're challenging issues. Uh, in the proposed revision, they become, and the proposed revision is a revision that was offered that the public has seen and we've all seen by uh, Jack Ryan, Council Member Ryan. Um, things like metrics become part of the DITF mission to research and make substantiated recommendations about the controversy of some of the metrics that are proposed to be used. This isn't stated explicitly in the DITF. It's just an example of some of the really important work that people on the DITF are particularly um, equipped to deal with. So this mission, the council should be and is really grateful for the members of the community willing to guide the town towards successfully addressing the systemic issues. But this is a work plan, both in the verbiage of the strategic plan and um, in the discussion that formed the subcommittee to form the strategic plan, a strategic plan of the work for the DITF in making its recommendations. Um, as such, I would enthusiastically support um, any motion that frames it this way. And those are my comments. Any further comments from the council?
Um, sure. I'd like to make some comments. Uh, so I wanna start off by thanking all of the task force members again. Uh, those who contributed to the plan by being on the committee and those who uh, joined in at the meetings. Um, this plan was before the task force. I think it was at least three or four times. In addition, uh, so that every member of the task force had an opportunity to make any amendments that they wanted. Now, I read uh, the plan very carefully. And when I look at our diversity element, um, it is completely in line with our diversity element, uh, the plan that was written. It's also completely in line with um, the uh, enabling resolution that made this committee a standing committee. And uh, assuming that I can find it right here, I'm gonna read from it, cause I think it really uh, does give a little bit more uh, clarity. Uh, because it actually says that the uh, Diversity Inclusion Task Force is supposed to be giving these recommendations uh, back uh, to the town council. And the plan says specifically in its conclusion, the Diversity Inclusion Strategic uh, plan, so Diversity Inclusion Task Force Strategic Plan is intended to guide diversity inclusion initiatives in the town of Tiburon through the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. It also provides guidance on assessing the effectiveness of those initiatives um, as the Diversity Inclusion Task Force aims to advise the town in the areas of diversity and inclusion. This plan is a plan that recommends to the council uh, exactly what the committee has worked on for the last uh, year and a half. So I think after reviewing it, uh, I, I do think that it's a great plan. I think it is written uh, in a manner in which it is supported of the mission of what the task force is. Looking at resolution number forty-three dash twenty twenty, which created the Diversity Inclusion Task Force, it says, "A Diversity Inclusion Task Force of the Town of Tiburon is hereby established for the purpose of advising the town council on developing recommendations to further the values of inclusivity and equality and working to identify and address racism, bias and prejudice within the town." Um, in addition, if you look at the goals and responsibilities of the task force under section five, the charge of the committee is to provide advice to the town council, town manager and police chief regarding issues of diversity and inclusion involving the police force. Provide advice to the town council regarding ways to improve diversity and inclusion generally in the town of Tiburon. So then, when we look at this plan, the plan talks about uh, tra- you know, strategic priorities are the community engagement and education, equitable town staffing and bias-free policing. This is exactly the mission of this task force. In addition, the task force is providing this strategic plan as advice back to the council and requesting its adoption uh, tonight. I am very um, mystified how changes could be brought up at the eleventh hour on a plan that has been in committee for over a year, that has been discussed more than three, I think, three times publicly, at which time anyone could have brought uh, substantive amendments to the plan. And at the last meeting in January, I remember the meeting very well. I requested specific language. What language would anyone like to change? And no one had any suggested language. So I am gonna ask for this plan to be voted uh, in its entirety uh, without any amendments. I wanna congratulate the committee. I wanna congratulate our Diversity Inclusion Task Force, and I wanna say how proud I am of the work that has been accomplished, because there's many other Diversity Inclusion Task Forces that have worked in this blended council and community fashion that have not been able to work to accomplish anything. We have put Tiburon on the map in terms of diversity inclusion. We have shown our commitment, our shared collective commitment to making Tiburon a more diverse and inclusive and equitable place. And I know I'm voting for this tonight, and I hope all of my colleagues are gonna vote for this without amendment and show that respect to our community.
Are there any further comments?
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Jack?
So um, first of all, I appreciate all, all the work you've done. And I know it was an enormous task and it took you a long time. Um, and I actually would say that you've sort of done two assignments, not just one, which is really, you sort of have produced two work credits. That's two, two work products. That's the good news. Um, and I definitely, to uh, Councilmember fears influences, I definitely will apologize for not having raised these issues sooner. Um, but I won't apologize for trying to get the best um, and most appropriate strategic, strategic plan um, that our DITF has. I, I, fact that I am coming with suggestions for improvements now, I, I can't possibly be bothered to apologize for that, because I'm just trying to make it as good as it can be. My, I, I posited some suggestions, and the reason I did comes from the final sentence in the introduction of the D, of the strategic plan.
Yeah.
The sentence says, "This strategic plan provides a transparent roadmap for the DITF to make recommendations." On page two, where the areas that we've identified are further detailed, all of those elaborations say, "Town should, the police department should, the town of Tiburon should." And I would like to reframe those to have them talk to the DITF. Because again, from that last sentence of the introduction, the strategic plan is a roadmap for the DITF. This document should not be addressing the council. It should be addressing the DITF and talking about how we come up with the recommendations and, and advance them to the council. I love all the recommendations. I love the strategic priorities. I just think that this strategic plan, as constructed, is structurally flawed in that way. And so I would prefer that it get re-architected, the content being consistent with what it is, but reframed so that it, it is consistent and that the language in the priorities is consistent with the introduction. And so, and, and I apologize again for um, this analogy. Um, but it's the only one I have, and I, I wish I could do it with something else. But the strategic plan for the forty Niners for this weekend will talk about the weaknesses and the strengths of the Chiefs, and it will talk about the weaknesses and the strengths of the Niners. And it might even talk about strategies for exploiting their weaknesses and what they might do if they're having trouble with exploiting those particular weaknesses. What it won't do is talk about the plays they're gonna run. It's, it, that is a different thing. It's a, it's a different document. It's a playbook. And the, it's, it's, it works with the strategic plan to help them win the game, hopefully. Um, but the strategic plan talks about and guides which plays might be most appropriate and why they would use them. And in the same way here, I think the strategic plan should point the DITF to how we think about addressing these strategic priorities, but it should not include the um, the recommendations, and it should reframe the, the elaboration on the, on the strategic priorities. That's what I would love to support.
And, and so let me ask you a question. So your, your proposed revision, which really does not change the text of the first two pages very much, is merely to eliminate the succeeding pages after that?
Um, yes, although I have to say, I would prefer that the subcommittee, because I love making them do work, actually take the document and not use my language that they don't want to, but just use the framing. We can use that language, and I'm fine with that. But I, I, I don't, I didn't write it because I think it's better language. I wrote it to illustrate how I think the framing needs to be flipped. That's all.
So, so.
And, and I'm.
Wait, I would like to say something. So what language? What language? What language was written? I've received no language.
Yeah, none of us saw it.
We sat at all these meetings. We sat at these meetings for one year and a half. No language was proposed. Now here, I wanna talk about the shoulds that you're talking about. The town of Tiburon should encourage and support engagement opportunities and cultural events, including town meetings and work to educate candidates and volunteers about DEI and local government. Are we against? Are we against that? We shouldn't say, we should not say should. The police department should strive to provide a bias-free, inclusive, and modern police department while earning the trust of those they serve. The town of Tiburon should provide a best practices policy related to DEI that includes a diversity initiative. And I'm not going to keep reading because all of these things that are in our strategic plan are actually in our diversity element and have already been adopted by the town council. So people are going to hear anger in my voice tonight. There is a public process and there's a process by which we do business as a town council. We have a town council who sits on our Diversity Inclusion Task Force. We have been through multiple meetings at any time amendments could have been brought up. But to bring up amendments now and to try to kill a strategic plan that has been on the table for more than three public meetings is just not okay. And I, Jack, I know you're looking at me with that look of disgust. I have great respect for you and great respect for your ideas. But this has been brought up multiple times. We have voted on this multiple times and everyone, you know, I'm not singling you out, but you have been at all of those meetings. So I'm going to move for approval for the strategic plan as written. I'd like a second.
I, I still, the discussion I think is not true. And let me just say this, this is off topic. I think all of us, actually, I think when we vote, it will be shown that all of us actually agree with the actions that should be taken and what should be studied. What the issue actually is, is who does the document address at this stage in the process? At this stage in the process, according to its own verbiage, it is offering a strategic plan for the work plan of the DITF to make recommendations to the council about adopting the particular actions that we all agree we support. So the issue of whether we support the proposed actions is not on the table. The issue is clarifying who this document addresses.
There's a motion on the floor and I'm still asking for a second.
There was no second, yes. Is there a second?
There was a second, now there can be discussion on the motion.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
The motion is to approve the strategic plan as as written.
Can you clarify by saying who this strategic plan addresses?
Yes, I can clarify that I think that the strategic plan that was set forth tonight is doing exactly the work that the Diversity Inclusion Task Force was set out to do under the resolution that created it. It's in line with our diversity element. It actually supports the work of the diversity element. It is a strategic plan, much like any other task force or commission would send something to the town council. And for that reason, and for the reason that there has been lengthy, lengthy, you know, I, the third time we put it on the agenda, I mean, I was even asked by staff, do you really want to put it on again? It's been on twice, it was voted. And we said, yes, we want to make sure everyone is on board with this plan. And if there's any changes, we want to get them now. So I don't usually get angry. I don't think I've ever been angry at a town council meeting, actually. And I'm sorry because I'm, you know, I didn't sleep a lot, but I am angry. I really believe that we have spent so much time on this strategic plan. It's been a work by a committee of ten, ten people. And we need to respect the work that has been done and we need to be respectful of the process. So I, I also happen to think, aside from all my angry things, I think it's an amazing plan. I think it does exactly what we were set out, we were told we were supposed to do as a task force. And I think there's been a lot of time for input, for amendments, and for changes.
So can I ask a question?
So I have a comment.
Yes.
Can I ask one question first?
Sure.
So, I'm sorry, did you send out the thing that I sent yesterday? Oh, okay. So I'm sorry that you guys didn't get that, but.
Was it sent where?
I didn't get it.
Was it sent to the public too? It shouldn't be sent to us without being sent to the public.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. It's part of the late mail.
Oh, part of the late mail, okay.
I don't know if everyone reads the late mail, I usually do.
I try to, but I, I read the on-time mail more than I do the late mail, but yes.
Sorry, it sounded like yesterday, sorry.
Again, so I guess my main response to what I'm hearing is that I read the introduction and the sentence that everyone's been reading kind of in the, in the opposite way that I'm hearing from Jack and Alice in that what, the way I look at it is that the introduction, the second paragraph of the introduction spells out what this document does. And I think we all agree that that's the correct statement. The strategic plan provides a transparent roadmap for the DITF to make substantiated recommendations to the town council for the town of Tiburon to address implicit bias, explicit biases that are difficult to detect. So my view is that describes what this document is about. And then the further discussion below, while it might be not labeled exactly how you would label it, I think the, the understanding that I have of it is that these are the goals that the DITF is working toward.
Yes.
So the idea is, this is, this is designed to guide the actions of the DITF. And the DITF is trying to get the town to do these things. So that's how I read it. I think it's easy to support and I'm going to support it.
So can I just say one more thing?
Yes, Jack.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, it was, I think it was late mail nine. If you are interested in pulling up, and I'm just going to, all I want to do is read the first thing that I rewrote under these areas are further detailed below. And you can read the original document or my edits, but, you know, creating DEI-centered community engagement and education. Right, that, that was the original. And what I said was, recognizing that an educate and celebrate approach has already achieved significant positive community feedback, the DITF, because again, this is to the DITF, will continue to advocate for and plan engagement opportunities and cultural events. The task force will create event calendars annually and continually refine strategies to increase community participation. In addition, the DITF will sponsor recommendations to promote community interest in town meetings and work to educate candidates and volunteers about DEI and local government. So it essentially says exactly the same thing, except that it says it to the DITF instead of saying that the town should. And I apologize that you guys didn't get this in a timely manner. And again, I'm, I'm not going to apologize for trying to improve the document. And I'm not going to relitigate.
No, no.
Yeah, I just want to say something.
As I understand what you're saying is that you just changed verbiage, not what the work plan has to do, not why it should be done, but to be consistent with the second paragraph, that the strategic plan is the roadmap of the DITF to make recommendations. Is that it?
Was it?
Holly, yes.
Um, I did see that Annette has her hand up.
Uh, we, we
Well, you, I think Mayor Fredericks would have to reopen public comments.
I was asking if you'd be willing to reopen public comments.
Of course I would. But is there any further comment from the council?
Yeah, so I, I have one. I think there, there, there seems to be a pretty big disagreement around sort of procedure and a couple of other things here. I, I don't think we should let perfect be the enemy of good in this instance. And I think that the, the, the DITF, which we're all, all part of, we had a lot of opportunity to, to make changes, I think. So, and, and there, there's also nothing that would stop us from revising this, right? Between now and, and the next meeting, we could, we could take Jack's revisions into the next meeting and revise the plan and bring it back. But I think, you know, for, for today, I think there's been a lot of work put in. This, this committee has been around for over three years and we're just, we're just now getting a strategic plan. So I'd like to see us get it across the goal line, to use the football analogy.
Would you see getting across approving it as a strategic plan for the town?
For the DITF.
The DITF, this is the only issue.
I don't see, I don't see any confusion on, on my end. I'm not an attorney, so maybe I'm missing something. But this is, this is a strategic plan for the DITF. And the DITF is an advisory task force, is not a policymaking task force. So anything beyond that would, would, wouldn't be possible as far as I understand it.
All right, unless there's something really burning on the council, I'd like to reopen the public comment.
Comment.
Come to here.
Just going to stand here. I have been respectfully holding my tongue all night.
Can you come to the, can you?
But the microphone will record your voice.
Hear you.
I'll bring it to her.
Thank you. I have been respectfully holding my tongue all night, but I cannot let this opportunity pass. Jack, please do not include the San Francisco Forty Niners in your comments. Unless you have on some red back there, there are the Forty Niner faithful. That's my only comment right now.
And you said it without the word metrics, thank you so much. All right, let's bring it back to, to council if there is no further public comment. And was there a motion or would someone like to frame the motion?
Seconded.
Uh, can someone please restate the motion?
A move to approve the strategic plan of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force.
So what we're moving to approve is the strategic plan is the strategic plan of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there's a second?
I already was.
Second.
And a second. Should we take a roll call? Let's take a roll call.
Councilmember Nick Barr?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
No.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier?
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks?
Yes.
And I just want to take a moment to commend the task force, including everyone sitting here for all of your work on this and for Tina and Karen. Amazing, 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 amazing work. Thank you.
I thank you for the accomplishment and for the pleasure of working with you. It was spirited, very extensive conversations. I hope the public realizes what kind of thought and effort went into it. We move on now to action item four, Diversity Inclusion Task Force makeup and structure. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. The council created the DITF on October seventh, 2020. The DITF is a standing committee of the council and it's subject to the Ralph Brown, Ralph M. Brown Act Open Meeting Laws. The DITF is made up of five at-large community members and all five town council members and meets once per month. Per Councilmember Ryan's request, at the January seventeenth, 2024 meeting, council meeting, the structure and makeup of the task force is now brought to the council for consideration. I provided some options in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions or if it would be easier for me to read them, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff? I'm seeing none. I'll open this up now to public comment. Is there one online?
Seeing none.
Bring it back now to council for discussion and eventually, I hope, a motion.
So these are the, we're talking about, we're, we're in page one, right?
Page one?
The page one, the public hearing number one.
Oh, we're in AI, or AI dash.
Oh, I'm sorry.
AI dash four.
Yes.
Thank you.
That one also has to be emailed.
This in front of me.
So I'd like to start off, I would like to say that, you know, when we first debated the structure of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force, we went through every option. And part of the reason we supported having the entire town council on the Diversity Inclusion Task Force was because it showed our commitment as a town and as a council to diversity and inclusion. It also said a statement that, you know, we are going to work with the community as town council members to make sure that we achieve real progress in diversity, equity, and inclusion here in Tiburon. I would like to see the task force stay with the same makeup. And for those members of the public who might be listening in, all five town council members are part of our Diversity Inclusion Task Force. And then we have five community members. And we work together at every meeting to create policies that further diversity, equity, and inclusion here in Tiburon. So I would love to see our task force remain the same and I would love us to all keep it that way to demonstrate our commitment to diversity inclusion here in Tiburon.
Yes.
All right, prepare to be shocked. I have a different take on this. So I totally agree with most of what Vice Mayor Thier
Counterpoint.
Said in that that was the genesis of the, of the DITF and that was the thinking behind it. It was a three to two vote at that time. And I agree, and at that time, the symbolism of having the council on there was, in my mind, as important as the work we were going to embark on. That was three years ago. And I think that over time, it is reasonable to expect that the percentage of emphasis you place on the symbolism goes down and the productivity of the group goes up. And so I think that it is less significant to have the whole council on, on the, on the DITF. And I think that so, so from a symbolic standpoint, I think we could come up with a structure that still had council members on the DITF. And therefore it would be recognized as a Brown Act official town body that, that was different because it was prioritized because it still had council members on it. None of our other official town bodies do. But there'd be a little more flexibility. And I think the last discussion that you heard is, is a great example of why this might end up being super beneficial. Because when this, the strategic plan process was going on, I had one meeting external to the, to the meetings with somebody on the, on the subcommittee, talked about my views. I'm pretty sure they were the same as what I said earlier tonight. But, but beyond that, it was, it seemed inappropriate for me to try to participate at that level with the subcommittee because it would be a Brown Act violation. So it kind of hamstrung me and, and Vice Mayor Thier is correct in that in the public meetings where we discussed it, I could have made those changes. But if, if there was good morning, everyone at the January Diversity Task Force meeting, it, I thought we were addressing that and the motion got passed anyway. And the two of the three council members that were there abstained. So it's really unclear to me what the benefit is. If we can bring recommendations from the DITF to the council without most of the council participating, then why do we need the council on there? And, and especially, why do you need me on there? Like, I definitely appointed these five people, incredibly now four, but because they were the experts and I'm not. Like, I want them to do the DITF work that I'm not an expert in and bring the recommendations to me so I can vote and approve them. I don't see the benefit of of me being part of the DITF when I'm hamstrung from interacting with DITF members because of Brown Act. And then the optics, well, as you saw tonight, they just get awkward, right? Like, there's, there's anger and that's because of the structure. Make no mistake. I don't think Holly hates me. I don't think I'm a dipshit, excuse my French. But the structure made it look, made that discussion awkward. It's the structure. So I think it would be great and productive for DEI in Tiburon if we reduce the number of council members on. And as an added benefit, we could reconstitute such that anybody, so I would say one or two council members, any of those six or seven members can be the chair. Right now, the way it is, it has to be a council member. And the council elects the chair. We can make it such that anyone could be the chair. The DITF itself could elect the chair and the vice chair. So it would be driving itself. It was, it would not, it would be so much more productive and effective, I think. And, and I, and I, I get people are emotionally attached to the current. And even Mr. Caller said earlier that, you know, if anything broke, don't fix it. But I got to say, if you were here for the last 20 minutes, it's brokenish. And I, I, I think it would be a mistake to keep it as is, especially with this guy on here.
Once again, I think I interpreted, I'm sorry, but I interpreted it the exact opposite way. I think if, if you were not on the DITF and and this strategic plan came to you, you would be even more inclined to change it and reject it. You know, when, uh, at least now you were participating and you could have spoken up, but you didn't. They gave you an opportunity to have input that you didn't take, but you could have. If, if you weren't on that committee and the strategic plan came at you out of the blue, I have no, I have no doubt that you would feel even more strongly that it was not acceptable and would reject it. So I, I think it wouldn't have avoided tonight. I think it would have exacerbated the way it looked tonight.
I can see that perspective, but I respectfully, I think that I could have influenced the outcome beforehand in, in a different way. And, and I think it might.
And let's ask, let's ask a Brown Act question though. Um, so what, what um, what he's saying is right now, he felt like he couldn't speak to a subcommittee member because it would be a violation of the Brown Act. But if there were an ad hoc committee that had two council members on it, um, he would feel free to talk to other members of the committee about issues. Wouldn't that be a Brown Act violation too? Cause it gets a third council member involved?
So first of all, I think it's a standing committee, wouldn't be an ad hoc of what, what Councilmember Ryan's suggesting. It would still be a body, a Brown Act body. Uh, but if you had two council members and five uh, appointed, so you have a seven-member body, um, Councilmember Ryan couldn't talk to a majority of that body about I mean, there, there is a nuance there because if you have two council members on there, he can't talk to those two council members. That would be a violation of the Brown Act as pertains to the city council. But he couldn't talk to majority of the, of the body um, as well.
Okay, but wait, wait, wait. On the, on the subcommittee, right? There was only one council member. So he, he could have spoken with the three other uh, members of the committee without violating any Brown Act violations, right?
With the subcommittee, if the subcommittee goes out and elicits uh, questions or responses from the other members who are not on that subcommittee, that would be a violation of the Brown Act.
But if he wanted to go talk with members of that subcommittee, particularly non-council members, he would be able to, would he not?
If he was on the DTIF?
Yeah.
No, he would not. If there's, if there's, let me, let me, it's so hard to get this straight, so I'm gonna try to. If you have a member, if you have a body, a less than quorum, let's say you have four or five as part of the body, a- as the less than quorum amount. If Jack talks to one of those folks about a matter, it's within the subject matter jurisdiction of that body, that could be perceived as a Brown Act violation.
Okay, but, but in this case, in this case, there were ten members of the committee. How many people were on the subcommittee?
Four.
Four?
Wait, three, three, four.
Tina and I and.
There were four. Oh, but the four members?
Four and one council member.
Okay, so, so if there were four members of the subcommittee?
Three.
Three, three, three community members were on out.
Nushen.
Four. That's what I just said.
Okay.
Annette?
No, Annette was not on it.
Okay. That was on.
To be clear, you can't have a serial meeting of a majority of the council. So whatever the number was of the subcommittee, if those subcommittee members reach out to other people who are not on the subcommittee and that adds up to more than a majority of the body?
Right.
That's a Brown Act violation.
But in this case, if there were four of them and Ryan wanted to talk to them, Ja- Jack wanted to talk to them, he could, right?
Assuming again that the other members aren't talking to other members. I mean, if each one of those members has reached out to so-and-so, then that's a problem.
That's not, that's not for Jack to worry about.
So, so he's not, he's not violating the Brown Act by talking to them. He doesn't need to worry about that.
So let me take this out, let me take that off the table. Forget that that is even an issue for me. I still nonetheless think it would be more effective to have fewer council members on it.
And, and just saying, if you keep the same total of member seats and appoint community members to the former council member's seats, we'd have more community input.
Okay, so I wanna, I wanna respond to a few things because my, my name did come up and hate came up. Jack, I do not hate you. I, I love you to death. Um, we don't agree on, on this issue. Um, and also, I, I just wanna say that, you know, saying that um, somehow you couldn't bring up your comments because you were a council member on the, on the board. I mean, it just, it, it, they could have come up, you know, multiple times and that, oh, okay, but saying that the structure prevented you from, from in this case, bringing your ideas and comments, you know, I, I just, I don't agree with you there only because you know, it did come up three times publicly and you know, I, I do apologize. I, I did get angry tonight and I, I have great respect for work that is um, done together in a, in a working group and in a body and you know, I just, I, I just wish that your ideas and your comments had been brought up, you know, at the task force. But I also want to add that um, you know, with respect to the chair, I am the one, if, if you all remember, who argued against us limiting the chair to a council member. I argued that so hard and so strong and I think I only had one vote. And at the time, the entire council was white. And I said that I did not believe that a white person should chair the diversity inclusion task force. So I wanna make that comment. And um, you know, just so the public knows, uh, because uh, right now I am chair, I still feel that way. And um, you know, unfortunately, you know, that, that's, that's the way it is right now. But um, I really do believe that this is the right structure. I don't think we're at a point where we can take the council off of the task force. And just what happened tonight is a really good example of that. Because I think that I kind of agree with uh, Councilmember Wellner's comments that I think that you would have had a lot more changes if you hadn't been in the meetings and heard, you know, a lot of the things that were discussed and, you know, when it, when the plan first came up, there was a presentation and um, you know, it was very clear that these were recommendations uh, to the town. Um, and you know, as the task force, the, the task force is always told, well, you can't do anything unless the council approves it. So now the task force is coming to the council for that approval and we're saying, I, I don't know, I don't know what we're saying. I know what I'm saying. I'm saying, uh, you know, yes. But I, I do think that the structure benefits all of us. I think that um, achieving the goals of true diversity and inclusion and equity in Tiburon will take a commitment by everyone on the town council and participation. And so it keeps us involved in the work and keeps all of our ideas involved. And um, you know, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to say. I think the structure should actually stay, stay the same.
Um, so I, I will, if you will allow me to jump ahead of, of anyone who wants to talk, just make a few simple comments. So the biggest argument for the council being on it is somehow it elevates the status of this particular group uh, and gives it more gravitas. And you can see that when we all get mired down in who the strategic plan was actually intended for, um, it brings uh, our elevated status into question. Um, as flattered as I am to think of myself as an element of elevated status. I think also worrying about elevated status of one of our boards and commissions has a tendency to denigrate the hard work of other town boards and commissions uh, who also consider issues and forward recommendations to the council. This particular committee will provide a framework that addresses particular issues, but so does the diversity element of the general plan. And the council, no matter how many are on the committee or are not on the committee, will continue to work with these diversity issues and make policy that's consistent with the diversity element and approved recommendations of the DITF. I think of the council as, as some kind of window dressing that elevates the importance of these issues. It is a wonderful idea. I'm, I'm not sure how grounded it is um, in reality. I, I think of reconstituting the diversity of committees uh, membership of the council to two, one or two members has the potential to increase community membership, which is a good thing. And it also allows the task force instead of the council, if we so choose to make that change, to choose its own chair, which, which is important. Um, I would really like to see a member of the community chair this as I think um, the vice mayor voiced some approval of two. I think it has one really, really good advantage and it simplifies compliance to the Brown Act, which everyone is always confused about, such that sometimes I ask people, who else have you talked to? Um, and I don't want to be in a position of policing the Brown Act. Um, I think keeping council on the diversity inclusion task force limited to one or two members still preserves any perception of elevated status that anyone thinks is a concern. So I support uh, the change of um, that Jack has suggested.
Um, okay, so I would like to move that we keep the diversity inclusion task force structure as is. Do I have a second?
Is there a second?
So do we have?
Confused about the nature of this agenda item.
Say again?
I'm confused about the nature of this agenda item. Isn't this a discussion?
Um, I think this is an action item.
It's AI four.
This is an action item. So I guess we.
But would we need an action to keep it the same?
Well, I think, we're just doing nothing. I think what Councilmember Wellner's saying is uh, technically you're providing direction to staff. So if you wanted to make changes, uh, we couldn't make those tonight. We'd have to bring back the resolution to amend.
So you want to just reframe?
We, yeah, so we have to vote and keep it the same though. You can, you can just do, take no action.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like a, I'd like a vote, just to show our commitment. I'd like to have a vote to show our commitment, so.
Yeah, straw vote to determine whether or not we're gonna bring any action back to change and th- this request from Councilmember Vice Mayor Thier is to uh, keep everything the same.
Right.
And did I hear a second?
And.
Does a straw vote require a second?
Yes.
I'll make it that.
I don't, I'm not gonna look now that. I'm just gonna say yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right, so the motion on the table is to not change the structure?
Correct.
Correct.
Because no one paid any attention to our town attorney?
My, substitute motion or no?
Sure.
All right. I don't know if this makes any sense, but I would make a motion that we change the structure um, to make it two or fewer council members. Um, allow the, the whole body itself to elect the chair and vice chair and any of the members can be the chair.
And I will second that. So where are we?
We vote on the second, just like.
And it's, just to be clear, this sounds like a real motion, but it's not a real motion.
Direction to bring back amendments to effectuate.
Want to make sure everyone's aware. We're not really voting on this. We're polling ourselves.
Okay.
We're voting on the directions we're gonna take to, give to staff. Is that right?
Correct.
And so are we voting on the substitute motion that the direction will be the changes that Jack proposed?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, there's public comment.
Um, we're in the middle of a vote. Is it inappropriate to reopen public input?
Let me just see, are there any other straw vote amendments that we want to do? Or are we just gonna stick with two?
Well, let's vote on this. Um, we have a motion on table.
There was no public comment.
Let me just back up.
Did I skip public comment?
You did not skip, skip public comment. You have the option of reopening public comment if you'd like before you take a vote.
But can the same person speak twice in public comment?
She didn't speak to this issue, did she? No.
Oh, okay.
She spoke on a different issue. I'd like to reopen public comment, please.
Thank you for reopening public comment. Tina Pike Day of the diversity inclusion task force. I just wanted to state that the diversity inclusion task force actually voted on this issue earlier tonight and voted to keep the structure the same. Thank you.
And so that was their recommendation to the council?
That is our recommendation.
I'm Annette Harris. I'm a former member of the task force on diversity and inclusion. And I'm gonna take this opportunity to beat up on Jack once more, although this time not about the Forty Niners. If you go back to the November minutes, you will note that I brought up this concept of changing the structure. And I very specifically stated, well, we don't have to have, you know, five members. We can have one or two. So I want to have you stand corrected that I'm happy that you've come around to this point of view, but there were other people who considered this and brought this to the attention of the uh, task force. Uh, and it's a matter of, of uh, public record.
Thank you, and thank you, Annette. Um, I will close public comment and bring it back for a vote on the substit-
I wanna say one more thing.
Um, I will reopen. That, I mean, I, I obviously urge the council to keep the structure as is. I think it not only adds uh, legitimacy, but it uh, it just, it just, it, it sends the message to the public that um, the council really takes this seriously. That, that you care about inclusion and diversity in, in the town. Um, you know, we're not trying to do anything crazy here. We just, we're just trying to make workplaces and communities that really work for everyone, right? Um, and um, I think, you know, I, I, I think also if you, when you go back and you talk about this, if anyone comes up with even wanting to, I mean, I think this could be a slippery, slippery slope that eventually you won't want the, the DITB TF to even be subject to the Brown Act and that you'll want to make it just some little committee um, that doesn't even have to be subject to the Brown Act and that would devalue and diminish the status of the DITF. Um, already, I think by saying that you want to change the structure, I feel like you're devaluing and diminishing the status of the DITF and showing a sort of a little bit of a lack of support, I feel. Um, so I, I would like you to please think about keeping, keeping the structure as is because we really just, we're just make, we're just making recommendations, but we want your support. Um, how can we make recommendations regarding training, education for the police department or cultural events? Um, if we're not, if we don't have this, you know, this, this support from you. So, so please, I urge you to keep the structure the same. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Any further public comment? Because I am not going to reopen again. I'm seeing none. I'll bring it back to council now to have a vote on the motion on the table, which is to restructure.
One point of information. Um, I just wanted to make sure that every uh, council member that not, that was not present at the diversity inclusion task force meeting today actually heard the public comment that the diversity inclusion task force voted unanimously to keep um, the structure of the committee the same. And I would actually urge a no vote on the substitute motion by Jack.
Thank you, Holly.
Can I just, so just to make sure, I want to make sure I heard that correctly, that the diversity task force is perfectly capable of making good recommendations to the council with only two council members present? Is that what happens?
Um, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't really think that's the spirit of what I was saying. Okay.
All right, um, I will cut off this spirited debate. And once again, uh, call for a vote on the substitute motion uh, to restructure the DITF as proposed in Jack's motion.
Councilmember Nick Far.
No.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner.
No.
Vice Mayor Thier.
No.
Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. All right, and um, do we need? Is that it?
There's a vote on the main motion.
Now we move on to Vice Mayor's motion.
To the mayor's.
The same.
Okay.
Can we comment?
Yes, on?
On the motion?
On the vice mayor's?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, uh, so this, I, I think this is my, my fourth or third or fourth DITF meeting. Um, I, I would, I would encourage um, members of the community um, to come to these meetings. Uh, there were zero, zero. Um, to come to these meetings. Uh, there were zero, zero people on the on the Zoom. There was one person in person who was here to um. Present only, so there were no members of the public at this meeting. There were two members of town council. Um, I would also encourage um, you know, the D I T F as a whole to think about. Uh, what time they're meeting to make sure that people can show up, make sure that it's after work hours, to make sure that it's. As well attended as possible. Um, it's something for another time, but. Uh, I I think we really need to think about how to get people to show up to this meeting if it is important, and I think it is, and I I, you know. Got to find a way to get people to come to it.
Yeah, and I I want to add one one thing, not to take away from your comments at all. Um, this was a special meeting because I didn't think anybody would want to spend Valentine's Day. Meeting with me and the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. So tonight's meeting that we had right before this meeting was called as a special meeting. A lot of times there's lower participation, but I think you've got some great ideas, uh, council member. Um, Nick Far, and uh I would also like to see us look at how. How could the task force create more participation in meetings and the town council? I know that I've sat at town council meetings where there's been no one. Um, here and no one online, so I think that goes for for both of both bodies.
Alright, with that, um, I will once again, for probably the fourth time, call for the the vote. On the motion that is on the table, which is to instruct the staff to leave the structure as is.
Councilmember Nikmar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
No.
Councilmember Warner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
No.
Thank you.
Done with that item. Next item.
Alright.
I'm not sure what that tone was, but.
The the legal department always has jokes. That's what we love about legal.
Are you just active with Foster City?
Alright, let's move on now um to P H one, consider amendments to chapter twenty-three of the Tiburon Municipal Code. Motor vehicles and traffic that regulate electric mobility devices. This is the introduction. And first reading of the ordinance. Is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, uh, council members, yes, there is, and I'll be brief uh with the staff report. Uh, this evening, uh, council. Will consider approval of the first reading of the proposed municipal code addition to chapter twenty-three, the Town's Municipal Code. Regulating the use of electric mobility devices. Recommendations again this evening will be to take public comment on this item, review the draft ordinance attached as exhibit one to the agenda and direct any desired changes. If appropriate, following deliberation, proceed with the introduction and reading of the proposed ordinance. The procedure would be to move to read the ordinance by title only, waiving any additional readings and introduce the ordinance. Pass the reading by roll call vote. If reading is passed, the ordinance will return for adoption on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, meeting consent calendar. The ordinance will uh take effect thirty days after the adoption. So a little bit of background here. Uh, throughout the the last uh couple of years, as the electric e-bikes have be become really popular. Um, all over the country, the towns received an increase in complaints surrounding traffic safety concerns regarding the use of uh E M Ds. Operating in such a way that their use is unsafe for the person operating the device, pedestrians and motorists alike. Many of these complaints are related to the use of E M Ds on the old rail trail. Uh, while the California Vehicle Code uh regulates the use of public roadways, our current regulations are insufficient. To adequately address safety concerns regarding the use of E M Ds in public areas within the town of Tiburon. Here's a table here that uh shows uh state classifications and restrictions, so this is adopted by the state. And what we're most uh concerned here with is the class one where we have the old rail trail. And on that, as you can see, you know, bicycles are allowed, uh, e-bike, class one e-bikes are allowed. Uh, class two are allowed, class three e-bikes are not, and then, of course, no mopeds. Um, and uh next to them there, they have, you know, the uh, in the second column, the um, how fast they travel. So the uh class one is twenty miles. Uh, with pedal assistance, class two, you don't need pedals, it goes up to twenty miles per hour, class three with pedal. Assistance only, and it can travel up to twenty-eight miles per hour, which is pretty quick. And that's one of the reasons why the state does not allow those on class one pathways because there there are pedestrians on there as well. And again, uh, the other restriction, the important one that you can see there is the uh. The age, uh, sixteen, sixteen and older only for the class three. So currently, our current currently our municipal code, all we have, all the information, any of the the information that we have currently in our municipal code is just related to class one and class two bicycles. That's it. And those are the only two uh electric bicycles that are allowed, any type of electric. Device that's allowed on the old rail trail, just class one and class two. So the proposed municipal code, what we're what we're doing is we're we're, the ordinance allows the following. Electric mobility devices to also travel on the old rail trail. One being electric personal assistive mobility devices, electric wheelchairs. Electrically motorized boards, like the like hoverboards, the one wheels, and then motorized scooters, because they're currently on there. Uh, the ordinance also proposed ordinance further defines class three e-bikes. And the type of motor that they are equipped with, the top speed that they're that they go. They are equipped with a speedometer and they're not allowed on our class one path, which is the O R T. The proposed ordinance also states that it's unlawful to transport passengers on an electric mobility device designed for only a single person. So we see a lot of two, two, three, hanging on one of those large super seventy-threes. So this right here is basically states only one person. If it's designed for a single person, that's all 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 the rider can uh be. Uh, and then the last one is enforcement. Uh, we were lacking a lot of enforcement in our municipal code regarding E M Ds. So what this allows here is.
David, just a quick question. Those super seventy-threes, that they they do not pedal those. So what are those class four?
Class two.
Those are class two.
So if they travel over, now if they don't have pedals. Um, they're typically class two, do not have the pedals, and if they travel up to twenty only, that's a class two.
Okay, thank you.
Now for enforcement, um, one of the uh. Codes that we have in there is that in lieu of filing charges, the police chief or his designee may allow a violator or if the violator is a minor juvenile. Uh, the parents of the violator to complete a police department diversion safety program, similar to if you get a ticket, you go to traffic school, take that point off. Mill Valley is currently doing that. M C B C, they have these programs, they're two-hour courses. Um, that they offer monthly, uh, that the uh violator can go and listen to safety. Uh, basically just like a safety class on how to. Ride and how to obey the current laws of these electric mobility devices. Uh, the ordinance also doesn't prohibit any officer from, you know, issuing a citation. They may do so at their own discretion. And in the event that the operator of the electric mobility device is a juvenile, the officer will make every attempt to contact the parent. Uh, or responsible guardian as soon as practical. But I'm gonna go back to the um screen here. I just want to make you make council also aware that. This municipal code um basically follows. What the county of Marin and the city of Mill Valley are doing. They are aligned with the state, so we're aligning with the state as well. Class three bikes are not allowed on the M U P, the the Mill Valley Sausalito path, so. Our O R T is is very similar to the M U P, so we are aligning with also Mill Valley and the county and the state. So back to our recommendations, again, we'll we'll take public comment on this item. Review the draft ordinance attached uh in your agenda and direct any changes if desired, and if appropriate. Following deliberation, proceed with the introduction and reading of the proposed ordinance. The procedure would move to read the ordinance by title only, waive any additional readings and introduce the ordinance. Pass the reading by roll call vote. If the reading is passed, the ordinance will return for adoption on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, meeting consent calendar. And the ordinance would uh take uh would take effect thirty days after the adoption, and with that, be able to answer any questions you have.
If I might add before, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I just want to add one thing on the motion. We specifically said February twenty-first. If council chooses to uh move forward with this and adopt by title only, we would ask that the motion say. Um, that the motion would return at the next council agenda meeting. There's some discussion about the February twenty-first meeting specifically, so. That was all.
Um, I have a question, but I think it's uh probably better addressed to the town manager. Uh, we did get a a community comment on this with a concern. Um. Can someone on the staff describe what the concern was and um?
I believe, uh, Madam Mayor, if you're speaking of the letter you received regarding the suggestion that. The town passed the ordinance, but but not ban class three. E-bikes on the old rail trail. Um. You know, I don't I I don't know what to say other than, you know, so remember, a class three e-bike will will. Be assisted up to twenty-eight miles an hour by an electric motor before the motor cuts out, whereas a class two bike cuts out at, and a class one cuts out at twenty miles an hour. Um. The I went after talking with David, you know, the the, and of course, the post commission reviewed this and these recommendations by the post commission. The idea was that we would be aligned with uh the state, the county and Mill Valley uh on how they. Uh, regulate class three bikes on their similar bike paths, what we call the multi-use paths, which is what the. Um, old rail trail is classified as, or class one bike path, so.
And the advantage of that is it makes it easier for the public to figure out what the rules are.
It would, the the rules would certainly be consistent, you know, and I don't want to speak. For the person who submitted the letter, they may speak for themselves, they may be uh online or here in the audience. I I think the reason, you know, I think the rationale in the letter was. If if you're in, if you have a speed limit on the bike path, that's. Lower than, and I believe we have a speed limit that's fourteen or fifteen or something like that. If you have a speed limit on a bike path, what's the point of banning bikes? You know, you should be enforcing the speed limit, not worrying about how fast the bike could go. Um.
And and I guess the answer to that is it's easier to identify the bike than it is to look. To figure out what the speed is going is.
Yeah, well, you know, it is clear that enforcement, um, and and just so you know, we have Captain Jared E available as well. If if there are any specific questions about enforcement for the police department, uh, enforcement of these types of regulations is always difficult. Um, that doesn't mean we shouldn't regulate them, but you know. Uh, I guess an answer, what I would say to that that comment of why not allow class three bikes? Is, you know, because we know enforcement is not going to be omnipresent, um, do we? Do we want to allow electric bikes that can travel up to twenty-eight miles an hour um on the bike path?
I understand.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Thank you. I do have a question. Um, did you say that there was an officer here?
Uh, Captain Yi is available online and.
Online?
Yep, we can promote him now to a panelist if you'd like.
Great, I would love to ask a question.
Yep.
Before he gets here, can I ask a related question to that one?
Sure.
Okay, sorry to put you guys on the spot, but I didn't see where in the proposed ordinance it actually bans class three bikes. I see in twenty-three dash sixty-six, it says they must be sixteen years or older and wear a properly fitted helmet, but I don't see that they're prohibited outright.
Uh, so the uh, the prohib uh prohibition of electric mobility devices were posted, so we're referring to uh section twenty-three dash twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-three, twenty-five. Which don't allow, don't state a class three is allowed in any of those facilities, only class one and two.
Okay.
Gotcha, thank you.
I I actually have a question for for David first and then maybe for uh J P. Okay. So. Uh, has there been any discussion about uh outreach? Uh, so that people know that the ordinance exists if if the council were to adopt it?
So if the council were to adopt this, we've had uh three public meetings with post uh in May of last year where we formed the subcommittee. And we've also had, then we had our second meeting in July where they came back to us with red lines. And then again in in November, and we will then move this forward with the safe routes to school meetings that we will have, and we will. Uh, make sure all the schools know what the current uh rules are and and what the current ordinance will be if it's passed.
Okay, and um on on that note, I would like to see if if this does pass, a very, very, very robust. Uh, public outreach campaign. Um, and I I will also probably speak with with the with the chief in one moment. I I do have concerns on um the the enforcement side, especially as related to uh juveniles. Um, I do believe that, you know. There may be, you know, eight-year-old kids that ride in tandem and and two people on one thing. I see it happen all the time. And my fear and my worry is that under section twenty-three seventy, there's some pretty heavy enforcement here. Um, there are violations that actually, you know, could ruin a child's chance to get into college because they rode tandem. On a bike and and got a serious violation, so. I'm a little concerned about this uh section as as it applies to minors. Um, I also think that. It is incumbent on on the towns of Tiburon and Belvedere to do major outreach. And I know that our um, our Tiburon Police Force and I know that our Belvedere Police Force. Are very good about warnings and, you know, not uh, you know. Pub public education, community policing, but um, you know, it. Uh, twenty-three seventy enforcement section B says, this chapter does not. Prohibit any officer from issuing a citation for any event offense based on his or her discretion. And that if it's not already codified in the California Vehicle Code. Then an administrative citation uh could be uh submitted. Uh, and uh also, um. You know, I I had concerns about if a juvenile did. Go through the police department diversion safety program, which which is a great idea. Uh, is there then a public record? So those are probably for the chief, and I'd love to ask some of those questions now. I just. Um. Have a little bit of a concern with respect to juveniles and children. May maybe not knowing that what they're doing isn't isn't correct.
We get.
So I have a question. The sections on juveniles, is that particular to a local ordinance or is that consistent with state law? I know the under sixteen was just passed by the um legislature recently.
So for class one and two, there's no age restriction? It's only class three?
And and that is consistent with the new state law? Yeah, thank you.
Captain Jared E is now available um on Zoom.
Thank you so much. Hello, Captain.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Thank you for being with us. I tried to explain a little bit about what I was thinking so that it might um, you know, give you a chance to kind of uh, you know. Respond, but I I do have some concerns about, you know, a juvenile. Maybe eight, you know, eight, nine, whatever, years old, maybe not knowing this is the law. And then they get this citation and I'm concerned about it being a public document and uh, you know. What the approach might be.
Well, um, you know, first of all, I I know you already mentioned it, you know, the officers, they do have uh discretion, and frankly, I think I I'd be concerned if an eight-year-old was being issued a citation right off the bat. Um, there is a big uh. Public education part that we're gonna have to do um from the police department before uh even taking any enforcement actions with this. And we've, we're already gonna talk about implementing a a warning system first, as well as uh working with these schools and uh just. Being able to. Increase our outreach, uh, so that way the community, including the youth, is aware um of this proposed municipal code and uh. We do ask our officers to use their best discretion and judgment in the field. Um, I I would be doubtful that an eight-year-old would be issued a citation for a first-time violation. Uh, typically for any juveniles, the last uh route that we want to go is enforcement. Uh, generally. it is to correct and to change the behavior. Um, so in regards to the public record, typically uh for juveniles, a lot of things that uh our public record um are not made available with juveniles. And being it would be a municipal code, uh, I'm not sure if there actually would be a record of that. Um, because I don't believe that would go through the county, it would go through the town, um, but that is something that I can definitely look uh look into. Um. There would likely be a report written uh because it would be a municipal code. However, um, there's a lot of information that gets redacted, uh especially with juveniles if there was a public records request for that.
Okay, thank you. So that would actually, it could actually be a municipal code violation. And would that be uh the way that it's written? I think it's an administrative violation, which is a fine. But I just want to double check that this is not a misdemeanor. It's an administrative citation that would be a fine. Would that be the maximum penalty?
That is my understanding of it. Uh, it would be an infraction.
Um, Vice Mayor, are you concerned that an eight-year-old could end up in U B?
No.
This is not a discussion. It's questions for staff times.
So so my concern is that any anyone, anyone under under eighteen that that may not know that this rule or law exists. Should they come under this enforcement? Um, it it's, it's not, it's not, um, you know, it do- it doesn't actually say, okay, we're gonna give three warnings, then a citation. I think the reason it doesn't say that is because you don't want to be held to that if someone's trying to follow the rules. Um, my concern is that, you know, what a thirteen or fourteen or fifteen-year-old kid might do on a bike, on a path, um, you know, I I don't want that to be a permanent public record that then would limit their chances later in their life. And it's not just an eight-year-old that I'm concerned about. I'm probably more concerned about the the teenagers, you know, that may not know this exists, or maybe they, you know, maybe they do it, you know? And um, I have all of the faith and confidence in our officers. And I don't think that anyone is going to, you know, see someone riding double on a bike and or or on a scooter and immediately, you know, give a citation. However, you know, since I am a lawyer, I read the exact language and the language it is not that clear about.
Okay, may I remind us that that we're at the point we are asking questions of staff? And we can continue this discussion um when we actually open the council discussion? Can we do that?
Sure. Thank you for reminding me, uh, Mayor Frederick. And um, I I think that that's all my questions, but um, I I think that what you said was very helpful, that it is a fine, it's not a misdemeanor. And the the police department fully intends to do a a public education program and educate um all uh all Tiburon and Belvedere residents. So thank you very much for answering my questions.
No problem.
All right. Uh, are there any further questions for staff from the council?
Just one, and it sounds open-ended, but I don't want you to be long about it, but was there any discussion at Post about class two riders having to be sixteen and wearing a helmet? Because it just seems to me that those, given that you don't have to pedal, are more motorcycle-esque than even the faster class threes. And if, and if you're just saying it's it's consistent with Mill Valley and they did not consider that, I I get it. I was just curious.
Looking at my cheat 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 that I made here. Yes, a helmet is required for class one and class, that's state law.
Right, but not, you don't have to be sixteen to ride a class two. Like you, because class three, it says you have to be sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Not class two?
Not class two.
Thank you.
Class one and class two, any age.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, was there any uh consideration given to requiring all juveniles to uh who are operating a class one, two, three or otherwise, a diversion safety program? Having them be, having all all juveniles who are operating one of these be required to do a diversion safety program?
No, so the ordinance has in there uh when they purchase these uh vehicles, businesses within town of Tiburon that they, if they sell rent, these uh E M Ds, that they provide safety information and legal use of such devices, what the laws are in in California to the folks that purchase them.
I'm just wondering, like, has there, was there any thought to the the T P D requiring that anyone who's operating an electric motorized vehicle be required to pass some sort of safety training, no matter what the age?
No, that was not, yeah, that was not discussed.
Um, is that it is, is that something that would be uh at too great of a scale for T P, for Tiburon Police Department to provide?
I'm just gonna jump in. Um, it, I think what David said was, you know, the the Tiburon Police Department's not going to provide the safety trainings, you know, we, uh, my understanding is Marin M C B C offers um to our course that uh the folks who are who are encountered, who are doing infractions would be required to take, but it's not the police department that would be offering that diversion course.
So this is a po- a police department diversion safety program at their expense as assigned by the police department designee.
So we'd be assigning that to the Marin M C B C, you know, we wouldn't be providing the program. We would be at our, you know, submitting them to our program.
So I I would, same question for that then, then do we know if the M C B C would have the capacity to handle?
Yes.
Yes, they would. They offer classes every month and and there's many other organizations that offer similar type of classes.
Okay, and and they would, they would provide, potentially provide the operators with some sort of proof that they'd completed a safety program.
Some type of safety. I know they would get us some type of certification.
And do you know what the cost is for an M C B C course?
No, I don't.
Okay.
All right, is is, and some of the training for younger kids, I believe, uh occurs as part of some of the safe routes to school programs. Is that right?
They do. They have like the bike rodeos and and uh, I believe, police, I I know in Fairfax, they come out there to the elementary, elementary schools and they and they, you know, provide uh safety and and classes, you know, all with your bikes on on how to ride and and how to obey the laws. But, you know, there could be something out there, but again, this is something that the chief would have to discuss with staff. Uh. I remember when I was a kid, uh, we had to have a little, the police department provided a little mini license plate that we had to put on our bicycles that showed that we went, we we went through a safety class. And if they saw us out in the streets, that's the first thing they looked for was this little sticker that we put on there and it was year, you know? I'm not gonna say what year it was, but, you know, there's a lot of programs out there.
That was when you were a kid, which from my point of view wasn't that long ago, but moving on. Do we have any more questions from the council? Comments? All right, let's open this to the public for public input. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, anyone online?
Yes, I will recognize Mark Freiberg.
Hi there, can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, great. I'm sorry about that. Uh, my name's Mark Freiberg. I'm a Tiburon resident and I am a cyclist. And I also happen to be a retired career safety professional, having worked at multiple University of California campuses, although not in the police department. I was with employee safety and led that, led that group. And I just wanted to uh first off, thank the council for addressing this really important safety issue. And offer up uh my observations and concerns as somebody who uses the old rail trail almost daily. And this was before having uh heard the presentation from the police department, which I thought was very informative, but uh my my notes of things I wanted to cover today are just basically that e-bikes are very fast and they're very heavy. And they often have multiple riders on a single bike. And that's the reality that that's out there right now. Uh, most of those riders do not call out when they're about to pass pedestrians from behind, which is another hazard. That's not unique to e-bikes. It's just another part of what we're trying to address here. The amount of momentum on these e-bikes is enormous and can cause, you know, severe injuries and potentially death. And I know we all want to prevent that, so I appreciate very much the work that's been put together for a draft. Um, with the increasing number of e-bikes and the great popularity of the old rail trail, which is a wonderful resource, it's only a matter of time before there's a serious accident. So thank you again for addressing this. Rules are needed and I'm glad to see that there's a draft. I think um, a few comments here, rather than restrict by bike types, which I can't even identify what type it is as these kids were past me, post the speed limit clearly and make it a reasonable speed limit. I personally think twenty miles an hour is too fast. Whatever, it shouldn't be just limited to e-bikes. Regular bikes need a speed limit too. And if there is a speed limit, I'll say as a cyclist who's a regular user of the path, it's not obvious to me what that speed limit is. It needs to be clearly uh posted and communicated, including the outreach needs to be at the public schools. Compliance is essential. I can say passing safety rules without enforcement and monitoring is worthless. So I'm delighted to hear that that there's some enforcement plans and that the police are engaged in this and that apparently they're prepared to have some staffing dedicated to the issue. I think the town council should require regular, at least annual, written monitoring reports on the old rail trail usage patterns and safety and compliance issues that have come up within the year, including any official enforcement actions that have been taken. And I think that finally, some rules should be posted at the major entry points to the path. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any further comments?
Seeing none.
Uh, thank you very much. How um? Did we ask for comments from the room? Yes, Tina.
Just wanted to make one comment related to the last um public comment, which is, you know, I'm a regular user of the path. Both a runner and a cyclist have an e-bike and a regular bike. And one day I witnessed um and just thinking back to uh Mrs. Gold's presentation on the Commission for Aging, I witnessed a regular bike um knocking down a very elderly old lady and injuring her quite badly. And I would just like to again comment that the speed limit idea I think is a great one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment in the room? Seeing none, I will bring this back uh to council, close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes, John.
I'll just speak briefly. I think this is a bunch of very sensible rules, consistent with the state and the county, and I support them.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment. Um, I wanted to say that I I take bicycle and pedestrian uh safety very, very seriously. Um, I think that this is a good um uh ordinance. And I do think that as the times have changed and as we've seen e-bikes proliferate, you know, the, that that it's really important to have these rules to ensure uh not only the rider's safety, but also pedestrian's safety. I also love the speed, you know, enforcement of the speed limit idea. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you. If there's no further comment, I will entertain a motion and a second.
So I have some, I have some additional comment.
I'm sorry.
Um, I, so I thi- I think this um, this is a great, I think, first step to improving bicycle safety. Um, I would, I'd like to see it go a little, little further. I think um, it's, it's sort of missing the mark for me. Uh, especially with the under sixteen riders. Um, I think, you know, some sort of regis- bicycle registration and safety courses for e-bikes and maybe for regular bikes also is probably a good idea. Um, the the path is becoming more and more congested. Um, and so I think that's, it's probably uh the better move um over the long run, but I think this is a good first step. Um, I think there's also the issue of cyclist safety. Uh, I'm like many people, I'm a frequent user of the 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 old rail trail. And uh much like the 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 caller from uh public comment mentioned, um, you know, the the kids on the e-bikes, e-bike riders are are don't call out on your left as they pass. Cyclists in my experience over the last twelve years also rarely call out on your left. Um, so it is not something that is limited to e-bike riders. It is also a heavy issue with cyclists. And I'm talking about, you know, not people that are just sort of casually riding a bike. I mean, people in full kit that are clearly breaking the speed limit and jamming down the 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 old rail trail. So I think, I think that it is also an issue there uh as well.
Thank you. I I just want to comment that with respect to the issue of the bicyclists calling out. There are many people who get confused when they hear on your left or on your right, because they don't know whether they're supposed to move to their right or the cyclist is coming to their right. So the public needs some education also.
Mayor, if I, if I may interject one uh potential edit to the draft ordinance based on comments made tonight. Um, I would suggest we delete uh in section twenty-three seventy that the diversion program be completed by a police department diversion safety program and just have it be a diversion safety program, because I understand it's not just the police department that will be having those.
So so just delete the reference to the police department as the.
As the giver of the diversion program.
Okay. Um.
I have, I have one more, more, just quick uh question. Um. Where is the the lighted speed limit um signage on the old rail trail? Did we remove that? Um, I don't walk fast enough to register.
I don't, uh, I don't know if there's one out there right now that.
That we, we had one up there, but I think we took it down.
Yeah, we, so we periodically, I think the town owns seven or eight of those temporary radar signs, and we use them both on streets. Right. They're primarily used on streets where cars are, but we have periodically put them on the old rail trail. Um, as well, we're happy to do that. Again, we're happy to do that more often. Um, there is a speed limit on the old rail trail currently. There are, I believe, a few signs up and we're happy to put more. Um, knowing that signs become invisible to people. Once they ride by them five or six times, uh, they don't pay any attention to them. Uh.
Yeah, I knew that the lighted one, it was on the straightaway just south of Rock Hill.
Yeah, we're happy to work with putting, you know, that back up again.
Okay.
So we used to have a policeman who actually periodically patrolled on a bike on the O R T in similar places. Is he still deployed at all?
We certainly still, uh, Captain, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the department still has an a bicycle that we use uh on the old rail trail periodically. Um, that, you know, there are various uh officers who over the last four or five years have have taken shifts and worked on the old rail trail. Uh, I don't know how active that program is right now, but we certainly can work with the police department to you know, formalize a a more regular uh patrol out there, so.
Well, you know, as a psychologist, I I would like to remind all of us what what the police department already knows with respect to enforcing things like that. Periodic in uh enforcement random uh is much more effective than constant, because when you have constant enforcement um and then you're not there, uh, people just do whatever people are inclined to do. If they don't know when you're coming to enforce, they're more likely to behave. Yeah. Any further comments or questions? All right, so what I would like to do is entertain a motion to read uh by title only with the amendment offered by the uh police department.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. I'll read the title. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Tiburon, amending Title Six, Chapter Twenty-three, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Town of the Tiburon Municipal Code. Will you make a motion, please?
I I think that.
To pass the first reading of the ordinance, to waive further reading and set the ordinance for final approval and adoption on the consent calendar at the dates suggested by the staff, which is.
Or at a future uh at the next uh regular council meeting. Or at a future, at the next regular council meeting.
All right, I thought you, the next one was too soon. Future is okay. Let's do future.
So moved.
And a second? We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nick Bar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier?
Yes.
Mayor Fredericks?
Yes.
We got a unanimous vote tonight.
And we're good. Are there any town council reports? Town manager reports?
No, Madam Mayor.
Uh, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.